A notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to the Public Laws 1975. Said notice is advertised in the Azzay Bay Park Press and the Beacon, and was posted on the Bolton Board showing the time and place of meeting. Please rise for the pleasure of the Legion.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good title on the agenda, recognition of retired officers.
Chief, are you stepping up first?
Yes, yes, I am. Welcome everybody here tonight, thank you so much for coming out for this occasion. We have a two-part ceremony. First being the honoring of retirees, so we have four retirees, or most recent retirees from the Lacy Township Police Department, startled back, and we'll do two promotions to the rank of sergeant. So, as part of this, I'm going to say a few words about our retirees, and then I'm going to have some of our current officers, their former fellow officers, present them with flags and say a few words. But, first off, you know, really want to thank the committee for supporting us and allowing us to do this, Veronica, thank you as well. Everybody coming out here, we have past chiefs, we have Chief Nally, we've got Chief DeBella, who all made this, you know, this happen. Legacy is important, tradition. So, what that means is we need to, you know, honor the people that, you know, worked for us, that retired. So, we have gentlemen that I, you know, I started with, so the most badge number being badge sixty-six, so only sixty-five officers preceded that officer, which doesn't seem like a lot, not at all. So, to say that these officers were instrumental in developing this department, and, you know, setting our culture, that's a fact. I can speak about, you know, Lieutenant Chris Cornelius, I'm just going to scoot about him a little bit. He was my senior officer when I arrived, he was a great mentor, a good friend. I know coming here, I was, I came from another agency, I was part of, you know, Energy, wanted to do the job, and Chris was always there for me. It was reassuring, you know, I had great guidance under, under Chris. Worked the night shift initially, I think, you know, under Sergeant Downing at the time, a long time ago. Chief Nally was the, you know, eventually took over as chief, we were under Chief Darmody at the time. But, you know, Chris was great, you know, aligned myself with him, because I saw he, you know, real, real getter, and really liked doing the job, and he excelled, and took over our detective bureau, and said he did a fabulous job, and he was a great friend of mine as well, and, you know, thank you so much. Behind him, we have Sergeant Charnas, so...
Are you speechless there?
Just a few words. He's got a great sense of humor, a great attitude, but Dimitri and I came up together in the organization. I was breathalyzer certified, and he wasn't, and he has a reputation for enforcing the DWI laws. So, I learned real quick how to do the breathalyzer, it was almost like a nightly thing. He had a reputation, and a good one at that, because enforcement of, you know, drunk driving is very important, so, you know, I do remember that, and, you know, around, good guy. I mean, miss him, you do, you miss him. So, that brings us to Scott Anderson, Frederick Scott Anderson, we call him Scott. People call him Freddie, good sense of humor, you know, you know, you tell people, like, now call me Scott, so we all call him Freddie. Scott was in the detective bureau for a while, in the juvenile unit, but he did various assignments, he was a great senior officer, great attitude, and he was a great mentor to the younger officers, so we appreciate that. Outside of the police department, you know, played golf with him, very good golfer compared to me, but he had a lot of patience, and he had a lot of laughs at my expense. That brings us to John Simonsen, who's a high school classmate of mine. John, great guy, great attitude, can talk to anybody, he was in the DB as well for a while during his career, but a really great mentor to the younger officers, and a great senior officer. So, all Lacy Township guys, they all went to Lacy Township High School, graduated from there, stayed in town, have, you know, homes, and, you know, raising families and kids, you know, all in our, you know, high school, or school system or something. I really think that these gentlemen, and you'll see, and ladies that are part of our police department, you may not even know them, because we've hired so much since you guys left, that you're like, who is this guy? But it's important that they see who you are, and, you know, we, you know, speak highly of you, and, and I like to tell the committee, you know, sometimes we go to the bargaining table for contracts, this is what it's about, you know, these, these, like I said, they give their heart and soul, not many careers you stay somewhere for twenty-five years, live in the town you work in, represent the town you work in, and even after they're gone, they're back here in support of our agency, and they really, you know, have family, you know, are the families here, and all these officers and families and friends, and like I said, our retired chiefs are here in support as well. This is what it's about, and without further ado, I think we said we do, can you say a seniority order?
Yes, seniority order.
All right.
Lieutenant, you're up first, Del Sala.
Are you coming up, or?
Yes.
No, bring him up.
Bring him up. Mr. Cornelius, come on up.
Nick, what's that?
I don't think I ever saw anything on his chin before until now, though, all these years, I know.
Wait twenty-five years. It took an hour and a half. I have the great honor and privilege to present this plaque to Lieutenant Chris Cornelius. I know him from many years, certainly more deserved. Lieutenant Cornelius started his career here in nineteen ninety-eight, he served all twenty-five years here at the Lacy Township Police Department. In two thousand and one, he became a detective, and, you know, he's a legend, so. Became a detective, two thousand and four, became a sergeant, still remain in the detective bureau. Two thousand and thirteen, he got promoted to detective lieutenant, so lieutenant promoted there, investigative division commander. So, throughout his whole time in the detective bureau, anybody who knows him knows he's built a strong reputation for himself, as an investigator, and also for the police department, police department. Outside agencies, from the state police, division of criminal justice, talk about the detective bureau, and/or the Lacy Township Police Department, like I said, will you know Chris Cornelius? Will you know Chris Cornelius? He's done it all, he's done homicides, robberies, everything you can think of, if there's a case he's not done, tell me, because I gotta rub it in his face, but honestly, he's done it all, and then he supervised them on top of it as well. He's calling us all, his legacy will live on in the detective and investigative division. You know, I still, I still say, what would Chris do? What would Chris do? You know, and I know the other detectives are the same. So, in two thousand and nineteen, he moved a little bit more to the administrative sides of things, he went to administrative org services, and overall, in full retirement, pretty much operations over the whole property, he was in charge of itself. But he hasn't done it, he's been in charge of property, evidence, anything else. Again, the reputation this man has built, not just for himself, but for our police department, throughout the state, throughout, throughout the country. He went to the DEA Drug Unit Commander Academy at Quantico, he completed that, he's also a certified arson investigator. If there's someone to look up to or a role model, this would be the guy. Professionally and personally, he's got a great family, they love him, you know.
Thank God.
I'm trying to share how I word this, so he's a great father, he's a great husband, and assumed to be a great grandfather.
Not a great grandfather.
Oh, wait, grandfather.
A better than good grandfather. I couldn't be more proud to know you and call you my friend. Again, if you know him, you know he's a good guy, he's one of the best police officers we ever had, and, no. And I, I can't do him justice with one or two minutes, he should have a parade.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Lieutenant McKee, you're up, right.
All right, good evening. Good evening. Is this working? My name is John McKee, I'm a lieutenant with the Lacy Township Police Department, I run a patrol division. As I look around the room, I see all my officers in the room, I don't get a chance to see them all together very much, so I just want to tell them how much I appreciate everyone who's involved in my work. I'm proud to come to work, I'm on the court side by side with you guys every day. Having said that, come on up Scotty. This is Scotty Anderson. Frederick Scotty Anderson. All ready, all Scotty. He's with his wife Laura from the door begging, so. So Scotty started in State Corrections in nineteen ninety-eight, which means he's pretty old. He was hired by department police, and in two thousand, he was hired with our department. Scotty was a police officer in our department for twenty-three years. He was in its crawl division for twenty-one years, and he was in the juvenile detective bureau for two years. So, when I first started in two thousand and three, I was on my first squad, I was with Scotty, so. Scotty was known, well, we were both known as a black cloud, right? So, a black cloud is someone who gets the majority of the calls, service public men, and the really bad calls. So, whenever the two of us were working, you could be guaranteed that there was going to be some kind of natural disaster. And especially when Scotty was in charge, you could definitely guarantee that there was a natural disaster coming. So, Scotty and I hit it off pretty quickly, myself, Scotty, and Chris Cornelius were all Pittsburgh Steeler fans, so I'm just going to tell a good story. So, we used to go out to Pittsburgh to watch Pittsburgh Steeler games, so typically, it would be myself, Scotty, Chris, and Mike Bernwick, who works for the DPW. So, we would go out to Pittsburgh, so this one particular weekend, we went to Pittsburgh. So, we get to the hotel, we're all fired up, we decided to go to the game, beautiful hotel, so Chris and Mike Bernwick used to stay in one room, I mean, Scotty stayed in a room, so. We're carrying our bags, we're all fired up, we're just going to change real quick, go out, get something to eat, get some drinks, go to the game, so. We get off the elevator, we go to the room, Scotty throws the card key in, we open the door, and we walk in, and boom, there's one bed. So Scotty is famous for leaving, saying, huh! So, I turned to Scotty, I said, hey man, there's only one bed, why you rent a room with only one bed? I didn't know you felt that way. So, it was very uncomfortable silence, pretty much, we didn't know what to do, I'll be honest with you, we were just stuck. So, I was like, hey man, let's just get changed and go to the game, and then we'll figure it out later. We go to the game, after the game, we go out, get some food, we have some drinks, and we just hope the bars were never, never closed. So, we go back to the room, and, very uncomfortable, because, two things, right? So, number one, I don't want to sleep in the same bed as Scotty. Number two, Scotty's a very gassy person. Anybody who's ever worked with Scotty can tell you, Scotty's a very gassy person, so. So, as we're sitting there, we're looking at each other, we're like, what are we going to do? So, we're sitting there, so we decided to watch TV. So, we did the old, one foot on the ground, one foot on the bed, him on one side, him on the other. So, it got to the time where we had to go to sleep. So, Scotty went and slipped into something a little more comfortable. And thankfully, they had very long pillows in this room. So, we set the pillows up in the middle of the bed, and we made a rule. I had to look at one, one wall while I was sleeping, and Scotty had to look at the other wall while he was sleeping, so.
Was there a couch in the room, by the way? Why didn't anyone sleep on the couch?
That was the other room. So, we, we went to sleep, and, oh, morning comes, and we hear the door to the room open, and we were like synchronized swimmers, because, and I broke a rule, because I wasn't facing a wall. I was facing Scotty, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you right now, I don't know if there's spooning going on, I'm not a guy, I'm sure. But as that door opened, we both turned and looked like that, and had the complete shock that somebody was coming to our room. So, the cleaning lady walked in the room, and she said, oh my God, I'm sorry, you are so flustered, she didn't want to do. We're all staring at her, and reached out, I grabbed Scotty by the shoulder, I said, come back down here. And she hauled ass out of the room. So, that was one of our, one of our Pittsburgh Steeler stories. Did we break down on the way home from that ride, or was it a plane ride? Oh, we got in this crowd, I don't know. So.
That's good.
One of the many tales that Scotty and I were involved with, and Chris that weekend. Chris and Mike had two beds, by the way, I haven't made that Scotty.
It was cheaper.
Laura, I, I've never told you this, but that's a night Scotty and I fell in love. I just wanted to break it to you, so. On a serious note, Scotty was one of our best officers. Great guy, I could tell you this, he's missed every day, everybody's ever worked with Scotty would tell you, he was always there for you, and besides being a very smart officer, being able to speak to people, which is just so important, even more important than that, he's just a great guy, and that's, that's the best thing I could say about him. I want to personally thank you for mentoring me when I first came on to PD, it was an honor to work with you for twenty years, and it's, I'm honored to call you my friend. So, please welcome me.
It's not the first time you guys hugged.
Lieutenant Flynn, you're up next.
What up, John?
Yeah, you can all come get that.
John Singh.
I'm going to roast him.
Yeah, I didn't know we were doing a roast either.
Well, I had some notes prepared, but then the chief grabbed me in the hall and said to keep it under twenty minutes, so I have to change my plan. I'm honored, to put which two bananas to come up here and recognize you for your years of service and dedication to our police department. To say that these are our officers that have big shoes to fill is not even a Leonard statement, anybody that knows you knows that you can't fill your shoes, John's a very unique, unique person. So, yeah, John started in the police department in two thousand, during that time, the town was in the middle of hiring a group of young, good-looking officers. We all started within a year or two of each other, the chief captain, Freddie, John, myself, so not only did I work my whole career with John, but the beginning years, many of them, on the night shift, having a great time, really was a blast working with John. So, I guess I reminisce this week, and, and try to come up with a good story, I can't beat that, so. Trying to come up with a good story about John, and I came up with a lot, a lot of really funny stories, great memories, it kind of dawned on me that a lot of us still work here, so. Can't really share those yet, but there were definitely, definitely good stories, but. One thing about John is you always know where you stand with him, guy loves a great argument, told me one time, he doesn't know why, just loves to argue about what's about, I'm sure Sarah could vouch for that. But you can always count on John to, to tell you how he feels, you know where you stand with John, and more so than that, he's just always been a guy that's been dependable, always there, even in retirement, still showing up to things, always had your back, not as a, even as a coworker, but as a friend, just really, really great quality, and I think more important to recognize that about him than any work accomplishment, because that's really a testament to who he is as a person, as a friend, and peppered in his most about having him in the police department is that commitment that he has. With that, we just pray you have a great, healthy, happy, and long retirement, I'm a little bit jealous, love my child, a little jealous that you're, you reached the milestone already, and that's it, congratulations.
Well, yes, it's a time, guys. There's a two on the interior to pass out, and you've locked our favorite problems, so. Sergeant Charnas, so, when I started eighteen, I mean, in nineteen ninety-nine, eighteen years old, Dimitri had just left us, he started ninety-seven as a special officer, he left very shortly for about a two and a half year window, went to state corrections and county corrections, and came back in two thousand, so, young in my career, this guy. Anybody who knows him, as the chief said, and thank you for that, proactive in DWI, he was a shift three guy, he'd get up at three o'clock in the morning, he was out, on the streets, two o'clock, two thirty, two forty-five, two fifty, two fifty-five, he gets up at three, right, so. So, aside from being proactive in DWI, he was one of our first DREs, drug or commission experts in the department, he amassed a lot of overtime donations. At a point during his career, he was assigned to the Oceanic Narcotics Strike Course, he did some high-profile investigations there, came back, was assigned as a detective, in charge of training for us, all right, and then was promoted to sergeant in two thousand and nineteen, that's been a great experience, so. Most known for DWIs and never saying no to overtime, he loved his overtime. Worked in patrol for his last three years as a sergeant, retired in officially August of twenty twenty-two, all right? Again, I've, I've had the pleasure, twenty years of my career knowing him, we've had our ups, our downs together as friends, good, good guy, no matter what people say, he would answer the phone whenever you called him, he would answer the phone whenever you called him, but it was always overtime. So, I swear to God, he'd sleep, he would sleep in his uniform, he would be angry, John, you have your beat man, I'm sorry, if you called him, he was there, and like, ready to go, it didn't matter. So, he'd actually show up, and if, no, we weren't here following your overtime, he would just come into work, he didn't know what was going on, so. A great career, I don't have his numbers and how many DWI arrests he made, it was a lot, against any of the guys that worked with him over that period of eighteen years of patrol, so he did a lot for the community, giving back to keeping drunks off the streets, so we appreciate it, we celebrate you and all your accomplishments, so thank you.
Debbie Mary Kennedy, you want to say anything?
Sure. So, I, I went to high school with all four of our retiring officers, and I think the thing that is most upsetting to me to see them retire is that, when I get pulled over, now I don't know any of the new cops. They're great guys, they did great work for, locally, they stayed involved upon their retirement, I think they're all great, all four of them, I know them all personally, so, wish you, best of luck and good health.
Somebody want me Juliana?
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to say to the four of you, enjoy every moment of it, it, it was really a love spat here, this was fun, this was actually a lot of fun to see that other side of you, because a lot of times, we don't all get to see that side, so it, it's really nice, and have a good time on that retirement, enjoy your families, that's important too, okay? Thank you.
William Dyckoff.
So, as I always point out when we have one of these events, the families, and how proud they are of you, but I also want to point out, and I'm going to recognize all of you, and I recognize this whole force, because as, as Chief Kenny said, you know, we support you, these are all men and women who give to this community, they make this community great, I mean, they've been around for many years, and it's one of the reasons I love being here, because people like you, who, who live in this town, you know, went to school in this town, work in this town, have families in this town, have relatives, it just, it, it's what makes Lacy Township great, it's all of you who give this, to this community while others take, so, thank you all for what you do, and congratulations on your retirement, well deserved, enjoy.
Jimmy Lynn Cortezal.
Thank you, Mayor. So, at the expense of the deputy mayor, he apologizes that he got beat up on the bus by these four guys, and he took his, he took his lunch money, I mean, these guys graduated the academy, and all these arrest records, and went out and educated, and Steve held on to his lunch, huh? Sometimes, sometimes he did. And you're welcome, deputy mayor, kid, because we care. No, he's, my, my brother, good guy, but to our, to our retiring officers, just great, great people, talk a lot about legacy, starts with you, and I know we're going to impart that wisdom down to our new people this year, that we're going to be taking on in, in the future, so we're very, very grateful for all the knowledge you've imparted, and the wisdom, the education, and the leadership. Thank you, and enjoy your retirement.
I want to welcome each of you guys to Every Day's a Saturday Club, it's, it's a great club to be part of. I was going to say something, but then I heard some of these stories, and I'm, I'll think I'll back off a little bit. To the young guys, this, this is, these are the guys that made this town what it is today, with their hard work, their dedication, and I would hope that you guys will follow suit. They, they were mentors by their actions, and probably some other ways too. So, this is what we're trying to get to with the police department, I didn't realize how close it was, but I should have realized it, and this is what keeps Lacy Township the great town it is, these, these officers in blue, the retirees, the camaraderie ship, that these guys can come back and talk about some of these stories that are, that are very, very funny. But again, the serious note, DUIs, things of that nature, how they proceeded up the ladder in their career, and I want to thank you, and that's all I have.
I'd like to say thank you to all four of them, and of course, there's other ladies and men in this room who have also worked for us that have retired, and it is quite the brotherhood, quite the family that we have in the police department. All of these laughs tonight were all done in good, fun nature, this is a, a family, and if we can't laugh at ourselves, and, because we see a lot of horror and a lot of bad things, so we have to learn to be able to laugh at ourselves, and we do care about each other, and it's all done in good, fun jest, and I just want to say thank you to all of them, I went to, from kindergarten on to twelfth grade with Lieutenant Cornelius, and it doesn't seem like it was all that long ago, but it really was, and the new guys, it's a great family to belong to, and I hope that you guys have a long, safe career, and I want to thank all four of you tonight.
Would any, would they, would either of the previous chiefs like to say something?
Ah, Chief Nally. Since the two officers being promoted tonight, first and foremost, I had the pleasure of working with Sergeant Tabe, who I didn't know, Sergeant Tabe Watkins, but clearly they've demonstrated a great ability to lead this department, so I wish you the best of luck as you enter this new phase. For the four of you that just retired, you're really making me feel old, but I had the privilege of serving with four of you for many, many years, you're all some of the best people that I've had the privilege to know and work with. What I think we may have forgotten a little bit tonight is the institutional knowledge that's being lost.
Yes.
The amount of work that they've done, what they've... Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Next up is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash two seventy-five promoting police officers. Chief?
Nope, Amy's going to read the resolution first. We have to make sure it's official first.
Oh, that's right.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, promoting Adam R. Ewer and Patrick Q. Watkins to the position of police sergeant for the Lacey Township Police Department.
Motion.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennett?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Now, Chief Kenny.
Now, Chief Kenny, sorry about that.
Again, thanks, everybody, for coming, and we wanted to thank the committee for their support in everything we're doing, you know, they've been steadfast in our support and our plan to get the department where it needs to go in the future. So, with these promotions, we're going to add two more supervisors to the patrol division, which is, you know, desperately needed. Supervision is key, the job has changed even since Chief Devell's left, it's already changed, we have police license incoming, we've got, there's so many different changes and supervision is, you know, paramount. So, this is going to be a great admission to our department and, you know, two great candidates, and without further ado.
Adam Ewer.
All right. All right, so Officer Adam Ewer, Division Number Nine Two, he, I got hired in two thousand, he came on as a Class One officer in two thousand and one, so pretty much my whole career, I've been with Detective Bureau. So, he's a graduate of Lacey Township High School, nineteen ninety-nine, he joins our police force as a Class One officer in two thousand and one. He was with us until about two thousand and six, I believe, when he attended the Class Two Academy, so Class One doesn't carry on, Class Two goes to a police academy, did you go to the nine-month academy?
Oh, yes, hold on.
Yeah, okay, yes, he went to the police academy and worked a summer in Point Pleasant Beach. Wanted to come back in two thousand and six, he comes back to us, works with a Class Two officer, and he gets hired full-time in two thousand and seven. He worked in the patrol division, and unfortunately for him, he was the junior officer for well over two years. So, what that means is, he didn't get a seniority pick, he would get ordered in, he had the worst of the worst, unfortunately, and yet, he's still personable. In two thousand and sixteen, he was selected to go to the Detective Bureau. With that, he joined the, or he was assigned to the Special Enforcement Team, which was part of our drug task force of trying to eradicate or at least attend to the drug epidemic. So, he worked under Lieutenant Chris Cornelius in Detective Bureau. In two thousand and twenty-two, he becomes our juvenile officer with School Resource Officer responsibilities. So, that means he's the liaison to the school. He has to go into each school, coordinate with all of the high school personnel, the principals of each school, the administrators, he's at security meetings every month, he's responsible, and juvenile case goes through Detective Bureau. So, he also oversees our Class Three, so a lot of responsibility on him. What else he has done, he's been part of our correction investigation team, which is for fatal crashes, not easy to do, but he's been doing that for a long time. He's a Hilo, which is a juvenile officer, so we investigate anything related to animal complaints, any animal cruelty complaints. So, he's done that as well. As I say, Adam's an all-around good guy, known him for a very long time, know the family very well, they're hero attendants. I know he, you know, his wife Jennifer, his daughter Margaret Daly are very, very proud of him. I would say, you know, anybody here who knows Adam, he's an excellent officer, he's already doing administrative duties, supervisory duties, as are our juvenile officer and SRO, so I have no doubt that he's going to be a magnificent sergeant, and I'm proud to congratulate him and have, you know, me being part of your promotion.
Who's going to hold the Bible there for Dad?
I, Adam R. Ewer, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of police sergeant according to the best of my ability, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and to the government established in the United States, and in this state, under the authority of the people, so help me God. Congratulations.
Good job. Isn't that great? That's adorable. Yeah.
You're next, young man.
Officer Patrick Watkins. So, Officer Watkins, Patrick, he grew up in Bricktown, we won't hold out against him. Came through the census and moved to Lacey in two thousand and one. So, Pat graduated high school, Bricktown High School in two thousand and four, soon after, and immediately, he joined the Marines. So, he did four years of service in the Marines, he did two deployments to Iraq. I did this for him, but he was in infantry, he was a rifleman, squad leader, and then ultimately a corporal, so he comes to us with supervisor experience. Soon after, he did this four years of service, he got out of the Marine Corps and then worked as a corrections officer with the Federal Bureau of Prisons. Took our civil service test, two thousand and fourteen, we hired Patrick Watkins, and he's been working nights, he likes the night shift, he's a, you're a scientist. But, you know, walk style employee, and we appreciate that, and, you know, a go-to guy on the night shift. He's our military guy, you know, very respectful, and, you know, very driven and very, you know, motivated. So, he's been part of our honor bar, and I believe he's part of our field force team, and that's old Wyatt. That's who he is, because he's dependable, trustworthy, and he takes physical fitness very seriously, yes, he makes that a priority in his life, you know, he's run some events, and he represents us, you know, very well, and we're very proud of him. He's, you know, he's going to be going to Dings for a little while, so that's going to be, you know, a big adjustment, but we have high hopes that he, you know, can bring sunglasses with him. And I'm doing good things, and so, I know his wife Julie and his daughter Olivia, some Ronin are very proud of him, and they're going to come up and, you know, present him to his friends, but I do want to say, congratulations, I'm proud to be here.
Check that little kid out. Pick him up, pick him up. That's it, that's it.
Raise your right hand, that's all we need.
Ready? All right, you could ask me. I, Patrick Q. Watkins, solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of police sergeant according to the best of my ability, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and to the government established in the United States, and in this state, under the authority of the people, so help me God. Congratulations.
Deputy Mayor Kennett, would you like to say a few words?
Just congratulate both you guys on your accomplishments, you should both be very proud. You know, of course, we're pleased to have you guys on the force and the support of the committee, and we wish you best of health and stay safe.
Committeewoman Juliana, excuse me.
Thank you. Just want to say that, again, another proud moment for our Township of Lacey, we're so fortunate, we've worked really hard this year at getting and moving forward, and look at how wonderful it's coming out here, we couldn't ask for better. We're thankful for the men that were before us, and now we're moving on to our new state. And personally, to Adam, I met him this year, I work at the middle school, so I got a chance to meet your wonderful husband, and what a gentleman. He helped me with a young man that I was trying to get into one of the programs that he was in leading to, and he helped me get him right through there, and I really appreciated that, and I thank you. And Patrick, same thing to you, good luck with everything, and we're proud of you guys, very proud, thank you.
William Dyckoff.
First of all, as I always say, that, you know, families are so proud, but Sergeant Watkins, your son wasn't paying a little bit of attention, the minute he came up, he beamed. He made our whole night, but Sergeant Watkins and Sergeant Ewer, thank you for your leadership, and for leading this group of young, new officers who are chomping at the bit to make Lacey Township great and keep it great. So, thank you very much.
Kimi Minn-Cortez.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, you hear it in everyone's voice, you see it with all the blue around the room, and you see the beaming family members, see that little boy run up. I just said instinctively, look, you got to pick him up. So, it was just great that, and then Veronica, you know, you need your right hand to raise, so. It's just a great visual, and it's a great night to be had by all. Again, we just talked about the legacy in Lacey, and you see it here. You see the baton get passed, you see the torch get passed, and you see the sincerity in our comments and comments from other people that worked with these officers. And you might not see that in some big cities around different states, but you see it here, and there's not even a question about it here. The support that we have and the respect that we have for each other in this town as neighbors and educators and police officers, that matters, you know, that matters, and you could see it, and it's palpable. So, I hope God walks with you guys, and I hope you're safe, and thanks for taking care of all of us and our family. Thank you and God bless.
Tonight is a great night. This is accumulation of a lot of hard work by the Township Committee, the previous chief, the new chief that we have, in trying to get this together. And tonight, it's coming together as to what we want from, as a Township Committee, what we want the police force to be, look like, and do. And these are the guys that keep you safe, and the ladies, excuse me, and the ladies that keep you safe. So, we got to get more ladies on board, that's got to come. But this is the reason, and these guys exemplified everything, think about that, two tours, two tours, that's amazing, and he wants to be a police officer. I know guys who did two tours, I don't want a part of it. So, that's an amazing, amazing feat, and I just want to wish you guys nothing but the best of luck, and to you and to your families, thank you.
Mayor, I think we should take about a five-minute recess, because I think these young men would like to go home with their families.
Oh, I want to get down.
So, can we have a motion to recess?
Yeah.
Move it. Second, okay.
Pausing the tape.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, number three, special use permit, Home Depot Kids Workshop Fire Safety Month Event on October seventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
Home Depot is looking to host a kids workshop and fire safety event on Saturday, October seventh. They're going to have tents, a couple fire trucks, a car show, and a couple vendors all taking place in their parking lot. Motion to approve it?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number four, special use permit for Lacey United Methodist Vendor Fair and Car Show Event to be held on October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Lacey United Methodist Church is looking to host a vendor fair and car and truck show in their parking lot on Saturday, October twenty-first, from seven thirty a.m. to two thirty p.m. Motion?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have nothing else to add on to this agenda, so we can take a motion to adjourn?
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adequate notice that this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to the public laws of nineteen seventy-five. Said notice is advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon, and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise for the salutary flag and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, amending Chapter seventy-nine to create the position of Assistant Construction Code Official.
Ordnance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter seventy-nine of the Township Code entitled Officers and Employees so as to create the position of Assistant Construction Code Official. This would be a title that we are looking to give to a current employee, because we are adding more duties to their workload.
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennett?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven, amending an ordinance that determines the salaries, wages, and compensation for employees.
Ordnance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled an ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, fixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township. This is to create a stipend for that Assistant Construction Code Official position, it's ten thousand dollars. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennett?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three, authorizing the conveyance of an easement identified as Block seventeen oh one, Lot One.
Ordnance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the conveyance of an easement of an unimproved right-of-way of the Township of Lacey to the County of Ocean for an intersection upgrade and traffic signal project on Manchester Avenue at Western Boulevard in accordance with NJSA forty A, twelve, dash thirteen B. Second floor? Second reading, open for comment.
Does anybody in the public have a comment on this?
Jean, I'm motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennett?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven, amending an ordinance that determines the salaries, wages, and compensation for employees.
Ordnance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled an ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, fixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township. This is to create a stipend for that Assistant Construction Code Official position, it's ten thousand dollars. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennett?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three, authorizing the conveyance of an easement identified as Block seventeen oh one, Lot One.
Ordnance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the conveyance of an easement of an unimproved right-of-way of the Township of Lacey to the County of Ocean for an intersection upgrade and traffic signal project on Manchester Avenue at Western Boulevard in accordance with NJSA forty A, twelve, dash thirteen B. Second floor? Second reading, open for comment.
Does anybody in the public have a comment on this?
Jean, I'm motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennett?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven, amending an ordinance that determines the salaries, wages, and compensation for employees.
Ordnance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled an ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, fixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township. This is to create a stipend for that Assistant Construction Code Official position, it's ten thousand dollars. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennett?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three, authorizing the conveyance of an easement identified as Block seventeen oh one, Lot One.
Ordnance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the conveyance of an easement of an unimproved right-of-way of the Township of Lacey to the County of Ocean for an intersection upgrade and traffic signal project on Manchester Avenue at Western Boulevard in accordance with NJSA forty A, twelve, dash thirteen B.
the conveyance of an easement of an unimproved right-of-way of the Township of Lacey to the County of Ocean for an intersection upgrade and traffic signal project on Manchester Avenue at Western Boulevard in accordance with NJSA 40A, quote, 12 dash 13B.
Second floor? Second reading, open the floor.
Does anybody in the public have a comment on this?
She not motion to close the floor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2023-24, authorizing the conveyance of an easement identified as block 1722, lots 71 and 72.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the conveyance of an easement of an unimproved right-of-way of the Township of Lacey to the County of Ocean for an intersection upgrade and traffic signal project on Manchester Avenue at Hayne Street in accordance with NJSA 40A, quote, 12 dash 13B. Second reading?
Open this up to the floor.
She not motion to close the floor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-276, awarding a contract for the, for the rental of John Deere loaders.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Jesco Inc. for the rental of three John Deere loaders with JRB Quick Disconnect Coupler 2022 or newer for the fall 2023 leaf collection and the 2023-2024 snow season. This is, uh, something that we do annually. Um, it is for a four-month period from mid-November to the end of March.
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-277, authorizing the appointment of a hearing officer.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of George J. Chio, Bacchus?
Bocchios.
Bocchios. Uh, as hearing officer for the Township of Lacey. Um, our current hearing officer has a conflict, um, with a current matter, so we are appointing another one.
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-278, appointing an Assistant Construction Code Official.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the provisional appointment of James Peters as Assistant Construction Code Official for the Township of Lacey pending open competitive procedures by the Civil Service Commission.
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-278, appointing an Assistant Construction Code Official.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the provisional appointment of James Peters as Assistant Construction Code Official for the Township of Lacey pending open competitive procedures by the Civil Service Commission.
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-280, authorizing the release of a performance bond.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the release of a performance bond for the Erie Way Project by LNJ Enterprises One LLC. This is, uh, at the recommendation of the Public Works Director. Um, after inspections, we'll be releasing the performance bond upon the posting of a two-year maintenance bond.
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-281, authorizing the refund of a tax overpayment.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to refund a tax overpayment. This is for block 1443, lot 15, in the amount of $1,587.11.
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-282, canceling the taxes due for properties acquired by the township.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel taxes due for properties acquired by Lacey Township. This is for block 1852, lot 8, block 1852, lot 37, block 1852, lot 41, block 1853, lot 1, block 1853, lot 7, block 1853, lot 40, and block 1853, lot 43.
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-283, canceling taxes due to disabled veteran exemption.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel 2023 taxes due on pro, on a property granted, the 100% disabled veteran exemption and refund the resulting credit balance. This is for two properties, block, um, 367, lot 3, and block 1026, lot 14.04.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-284, authorizing the placement of a lien on block 134, lot 1144.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of a property located on Beach Boulevard and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs. This is for block 134, lot 114, in the amount of $127.99.
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-285, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-286, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills. Uh, this is in the amount of $938,684.35.
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Motion to approve the township meeting minutes from September 14th, 2023.
Seconds.
All in favor?
All right. What's your back problem, I still stand?
Yeah, I know.
No, I'm just telling her, okay. Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes from September 14th, 2023.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve raffle licenses for the Jersey Coast Angler Association, the Loyal Order of the Moose, 1907 Lacey, the Lacey Elks and the Rotary Club of Barnegat.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve membership in Lenoka Harbor Fire Company for Nicholas Giuliano.
Move it. Second.
It's no relative, but I just didn't want to say it, so nobody could say anything.
Yeah, oh, yes, oh, yes, okay. Comments from the committee? Deputy Mayor Kennis?
A week one, Adam.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Resolutions? Oh, no, wait, that was taken off, never mind, sorry. Sorry, I thought we were buying cars tonight, we're not.
We're not buying cars tonight? Okay. Okay. Deputy Mayor Kennis?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I've prepared my remarks tonight. Uh, I've been doing budget meetings with the township for 10 years now. Those meetings are exclusively focused on expenditures and spending. There is a never-ending supply of wants and needs and mandates and contractual obligations. What is never discussed, which as a business person is very important to me, is where the money comes from, the revenue side. Mostly, the township receives its money from three sources, state aid and grants, taxpayers and aid and assessments, which is another word for building. Despite all the land contained in Lacey Township being a little under 100 square miles, which is around 64,000 acres, there's only about 50 acres left for residential development. Our only areas for growth are the commercial corridors, Route 9 and Lacey Road. If the plan is, if the town is not planned for some growth and we do not have offsets in the form of added assess, added assessments, taxpayers make up the difference. In 2019, our added assessments were about 38 million. This year, year-to-date, that amount is about 24 million. Generally, fixed costs are not what causes upward pressure on our tax bills. The proposed municipal building, police station and rec center, if they should come to be, will have a fixed cost, cost life cycle of 30 to 40 years. Once that time period is over, the cost comes off the books. I have now served with everyone on this committee for 10 years and in my opinion, the municipal budget is well managed and will continue to be. And just a note from my mom, I wanted to remind everybody that the, uh, Historical Society is running their haunted muse, uh, haunted museum at the Schoolhouse Museum on October 6th and 7th. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh,美女woman Giuliano?
Yes, first of all, thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor. It's good information. Anybody has any questions about it, they can speak to you directly about it. Um, I just want to say also that locally here, um, can't do better than our DPW, that the lawns and the parks and every area, even out front, is, it just looks so beautiful. We're ver, we're very fortunate, the way these gentlemen work and take care of this town. We're ver, we are very lucky to have them working for us. A big thank you to our police department again for tonight. A big thank you to our fire companies who we could not be without. Um, we're very grateful for their volunteerism. On another note, um, Heather Scanlon, who runs our Lacey Municipal Alliance Department, is having an event, excuse me, next Friday, which is Friday, October 6th, at the Lacey Community Center from 11 to 1. It's for free screenings and community health and there'll be vendors there, there's giveaways. It's hosted by the Municipal Alliance and, um, they'll also, Rite Aid will be there and they're gonna administer flu and pneumonia shots and COVID vaccines and shingles vaccines. So anybody that's interested should reach out to, um, 609-693-1100, uh, extension 2203 because she'd like to know if you, if you need to re, reserve in case she has a light lunch being served for anybody that needs to have something to eat while getting all these shots and all that kind of stuff. But, um, if anybody has any informa, wants any information on it, they can reach out to the Municipal Alliance Department. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Committee Dyckoff?
So I actually wasn't gonna have any comments tonight, um, but being Mr. Kennis, um, gave us some very good information, I'm gonna talk a little bit about giving and people who work for this township and I alluded it to it, um, when we had all the police officers here. Um, there are givers and there are takers and I look at the, the ladies and gentlemen who sit on this dais with me and I, I go down the line, I look at Mr. Kennis, whose family has been here for how many years?
1971.
Um, probably pays more taxes than all of us put together.
That's something I like to acknowledge.
Okay. Uh, has helped build this township to, to the great place it is, it, it is today. Um, him, his family, his friends, um, Mrs. Giuliano, same thing, uh, her husband, God rest his soul, was part of spirits, um, owned several homes in the township, his family made their home here, again.
I've been here since 1974.
Gave to the township, works for the schools, um, oh, you make a lot of money there at the schools, ooh, boy.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. McDonald has made his living down here, coached sports for many years.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald, um, helped with the Boy Scouts many years.
Yep.
Um, I can't forget Mr. Connors, um, again, his family as well, even though he's not a looking official, but he is on this dais. He was. How many years and gave to this township? Um, lot of time, lot of effort, lot of time away from their family. Mr. Curatolo, who works for the Board of Health, um, who gives back and, and, and has worked with at risk, at risk use and make sure and works to make sure our lakes, um, and waterways and parks are, are, um, up to par. My family has had a business in this township for many years. I've made it my home. My extended family has made it their home. Um, they've worked, they've donated, um, Ms. LaRae, her and her family throughout the years. So for anyone to insinuate that we don't care about this township and we don't give to this township, you know, as I said, there are givers and there are takers and I'll, I'll put myself and these people up here, up against anyone else in this township. So that's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Committee Dyckoff. Committee Coratello?
Well, thank you, Mayor. That was just amazing comments by Committee Man Dyckoff. It's appreciated, it's heartfelt.
Appreciate it.
Um, I, I think it's true and I've often sat up here and you look at the folks up here, uh, you don't have to look any farther than their children. I mean, these, the folks up here have, you know, their kids have graduated the greatest universities, they are Eagle Scouts, they, they have been valedictorians, they're great, great people. Now, I want to concentrate, a lot of people probably here, um, for a couple of particular reasons tonight, having to do with, uh, funding and budget and, um, want to make particular mention of, uh, the work that our deputy mayor does, um, because he does, he, I think we all do a lot, but he does a lot. And I will tell you about, when he talks about ratables and when he talks about commercial corridors, he talks about development, turning things into ratables, uh, and into a tax revenue when it was not before. Um, the man has, he's, his family's been here doing land use since 1971 and when he talks, he knows what he's talking about. Uh, he's an asset to the committee, uh, so I appreciate that. Uh, to dovetail with, uh, with some of, uh, committee woman Giuliano has said, um, as liaison to health on October 17th from 10 to 2 at Lacey Community Center and on November 17th, from 10 to 2 at Lacey Community Center, and on November 9th, from 10 to 2, again, at the community center. Ocean County Health Department's gonna have a lot of nurses, vaccine, health educators out there doing flu vaccines. We do it every, each and every year. If you're there, or if you have someone in need, come and talk to one of my colleagues. They're there for all of our municipalities. And made sure, and thanks in part to Ms. LaRae, that we have two dates now for these clinics. So if you, take a look at our website, ochhd.org. It's about 225 people working hard for services for our seniors, our schoolchildren, those in need of addiction treatment, medicine, diabetes, you name it. Take a look, it's there for you, and 99% of it are at no charge. Last public service announcement, Third Annual Nightmare at Gilly, October 13th, Saturday and Saturday, October 14th, at 6:30 PM. It is at parks.egov.basgov.com backslash LaceyNJ. Just go to our website. I'll talk to James about this. This is it. It's a wonderful event. Really, James started it, and I'm sure our mayor started it when he was liaison several years ago. Started it as something COVID-friendly that kids could go, it was a drive-through, so that they would not miss out on Halloween event. We have about 1,500 people, we're expecting 2,000 this year. So visit our website, take a look at it. If you have children or grandchildren, they're gonna like it. And a shameless plug, I acted in it one year, I'm not doing it this year. My wife is, she loves Halloween.
Hey, that's legendary, they talk about, that's legendary stuff.
I had no voice for I don't know how long, but nobody threw anything at me, thankfully. It's because I was in costume, they didn't recognize me, Mayor. But thank you for the extended time, Mayor. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
A couple of things. The farmer's market for tomorrow down at the Methodist Church is canceled because of the anticipated rain. Lacey Day, we'll know about that, I think noon tomorrow, is that right, Veronica?
Yes, we're gonna make a call tomorrow at noon.
So we'll get it up on the website as quickly as possible. Two things here. Since February, I have been trying, with Veronica's help, to get a meeting with Congressman Chris Smith. Last Friday, I got a phone call, could I meet with him at 3:15 on Saturday afternoon? And I had something else planned, and it was to go over to the moose, where they gave the money away to the first responders, which is something I truly try not to miss. They do a great job, they give out a lot of money. But I felt this was more important. So we sat down for a good 45 minutes, right here in the back room, him and I and one of his staff members, and we talked about a lot of things. What he's gonna do, he indicated that he's going to try to reintroduce the bill that Tom MacArthur put through with the nuclear storage, we can get some money out of that. Some other things we talked about was the Hawaiian streets, and how we need federal money to take care of that flooding problem. It's gonna be enormous bill. And then we also talked about the Bayfront area down there, we have some houses that are basically falling into the bay, and we have to do something about that. There were some other issues that we talked about that I'll keep private, but I was really happy with the meeting. Went well, we talked. And the other thing is, when he left, I had to get over to the moose, and he said, he goes, "How do I get down to the Hawaiian streets?" So I said to him, "This is how you go." You know, and he goes, "Well, I can put on the GPS." He did go down to the Hawaiian streets. And then from there, he went down to the Bayfront. Now, I have, I know Veronica's been in touch with the office, I have not had a chance to reach out to Congressman Smith. I'm sure he's got bigger things on his mind right now with the budget and so forth like that. But it's nice to have a congressman with, I think he's got 40 years in Congress, 40 years?
It's like 42, 43 years.
That kind of experience, and he can get a lot of things done. And there's some good news coming as soon as they pass the budget for Lacey Township. So I just wanted to bring that up. And I just want to dovetail off of Deputy Mayor Kennis's comments. I was thinking about this today. If we think of Lacey Road, think of how many non-taxable entities we have on Lacey Road. The main corridor to get into Lacey Township, we have this complex, we have going down, we have the post office, we have the Catholic Church, we have Forkett River School. Go to the other side, we've got the Methodist Church. These are all, and they take up a lot of land. This is all prime real estate that doesn't pay any taxes. And if you, and I will say this, if you think of TD Bank, about five years ago, I pulled their taxes, because I wanted to see what they were paying, right in the corner there. Five years ago, they were paying about $55,000 a year in taxes. Now, if you take, I would think that the average person in this town probably pays between $5,000 and $6,000 a year in taxes, maybe a little lower, whatever. I think, the total brother people, I know you guys pay a little bit more.
It's 6,700.
6,700? Okay. So divide that into 55,000. That's how many houses they take care of, with no, nothing on the school board, okay? They take, they plow their own, they plow their own parking lots. This is why businesses are so important. This is why doing this new town complex is so important, to get this piece of property. It's the only one we control. The Catholic Church is going nowhere. The Methodist Church is going nowhere. Forkett River School, we'll see what happens. Post Office, going nowhere. Okay? The county's got a piece of property on this road, and I guarantee they're not selling it. Okay? No matter what we do. So we've gotta get it to redevelop this, to get more taxes in here. Because if we don't widen the tax base, so that we will, and taxes will go up, we can spread that raise, the taxes raised, over more people, more entities. And that's, that's why we keep it. If you look at our taxes in this town, okay, we are the lowest tax entity on the mainland. I'm sorry, we're two behind West Creek and Plumstead. West Creek doesn't have a police department, and Plumstead, you gotta pay for your own trash. So think about all that. Our taxes, you get, what, two pickups, two trash pickups a week, plus recycling?
Recycling.
Okay? You get the, you get the police department, you get Public Works, we plow your streets. We do a lot of things, and we do a very good job. And it's a privilege to sit up here and do this. And that's why I, when Deputy Mayor Kennis, when I first came on the board, talked to me about doing this, I was like, yeah, this makes a whole lot of sense, to get non-taxpaying entities off our main streets, so that we can do that, we can spread the tax base out. That's important. Because you don't want to do that, I can show you towns that are basically shut down developing legally. And you know what happens? Their taxes go up, people start complaining, and then one of two things has gotta happen. They either gotta lay people off, or they gotta cut services. And I don't want to do that here in Lacey. I don't want to do any of that. That's why we've got to move forward on this. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor, I just forgot something I wanted to bring up. Obviously, we don't see Bernie Schneider here tonight, or any of the folks from the Vet Works. You'll be happy to hear anybody that was concerned about that issue. I, myself, Veronica LaRae, Rob Castor from the DPW, we met with Bernie on Monday, and we met him at the food bank, of which we are then giving him half of the building at the food bank. And so he was very happy that we got him a place very close to Route 9. He's not here. I thought he'd come out and maybe share his good news, but he didn't. But I think that he was very, him and his board were very happy of what we decided to do for them. So on a good note, the Vet Works is all taken care of. So, just so everybody knows out there in public land.
Great job, Peggy Sue.
Yes, that was Peggy Sue who actually discovered it, so I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Comments from the public? Just right here in the, not any of you come down.
Joe Vassoli, I live in Seven, can't draw.
Can't say your address, I'll let him say your address.
I just want to know, how much of the food bank did the food bank lose?
It's truly just the front area is what they're gonna lose, up to the bathroom in the front area. Actually, the food bank is very happy about, because we're gonna help them out with, you know, shelving and upper areas for them there.
Because food's important in the town.
Yes. Oh, no, there's no doubt. Yeah, we have over 300 families that we take care of, so we know that. And they, we met with them first, that's why I couldn't say anything at the meeting, because I wanted to make sure our conversations that we had had were going in the right directions before I started giving out all this information. But everybody's, everybody seems very happy and content, so.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am, this is ma'am. Come out, you need to come down to the mic, please. Just your name, please.
Laura Schetlich. Yeah, this has nothing to do with the, you know, the municipal.
Can you spell your last name for me? Thank you.
This has to do with the Bayfront Park.
Okay.
And the mowing that's gonna be happening.
Right.
The unfortunate mowing that's gonna be happening. My question is, I have questions and concerns. First of all, I guess after Sandy, I wasn't here at that point, I only moved here a couple of years ago, it was replanted, right, with a lot of native plants?
Right.
Okay. My question is, why are we mowing the Bayfront Park every October, just because it says we don't mow? Why are we mowing?
Okay, so it's kind of too bold. You know, obviously during a certain period of the year, we're not allowed to mow based on the permits for the tarpon turtles, okay? And I'm trying to work with the DEP to get some relief on that mowing restriction, because from hearing from the residents, that the grass is getting too high, so those turtles, which I think we had about five nests there this year, if I'm not mistaken, based from some of the other residents, said the turtles aren't even able to move to get to the water, and then the grass is growing up in front of the turtle tunnels, so they can't even get into their spots to go into the water once they hatch. So then the permit does say, as of October, we can start mowing the area, and it's basically a cry from the residents that live there that want the grass cut. They would particularly like the grass cut year-round.
Okay. From what I understand, I've been to another meeting, there's two residents on beach, on that, on that part of beach that live there, that have issues with the grasses, and I don't think anybody else is having issues. Cutting everything down is certainly not gonna help the turtles whatsoever. I mean, if you've ever been to a swamp or a pond, turtles know how to get through. If you just want the pipes cleared, then that's easy, you cut around the pipes, and you let them get through. But cutting everything else down just makes no sense, because right now, there's, off the top of my head, there's false foxglove, there's Queen Anne's Lace, there's evening primrose, there's solidago, there's, well, the milkweed, that's another story. You guys cut that down in May before it even gets a chance to bloom. Why are we planting native milkweed when we're cutting it down? It never gets a chance to bloom, so it's never beneficial to any of these animals or these insects. Most insects and bees are specialists, they need certain, they can go and get nectar from anywhere, but they need certain pollen plants in order to, for their food, and they're migrating at this point. The monarch is endangered, and we're cutting down all the solidago, and everything that they use to get from here to Cape May, from Cape May to, Cape May is already experiencing a huge drop in numbers of monarchs. And here we have this beautiful feeding ground, and for no reason, other than a couple residents are saying that the turtles can't get through, yet they say that there's turtles coming up on their property, because there's, there's cages there. I don't believe there's turtles coming up on their property, I don't believe that there's any turtle eggs in those cages, because I walk it every day. It's been the same, it's looked the same. It's just, last year, when I walked through there, it was like, you can hear the birds going back and forth, the crickets. And in one fell swoop of the lawnmower, and I don't even know how much it costs to go do that, all the life is wiped out of that park. There's nothing left. It's all gone, and it makes no sense why we are planting all these native plants when we're just gonna cut them down, when this is the time they need the most. This is the last source of food they get before they leave our area. It makes no sense to cut it all down. And then people complain about the geese. Well, what do geese like? They like freshly mown football fields, baseball fields. We're cutting down all those fields, if we let it grow, the geese wouldn't be a problem at the park. You know? I mean.
Because they don't like to hide in the high grass.
They don't like that. They like freshly mown and every, so yeah, people complain about all the goose poop there. We're sending them an invitation every time we mow the lawn, come and poop in the, in the park where the kids play. I don't understand why it happens. Just because the sign says we can't mow, why do we mow after October?
Well, it's part of the permit, it's in the permit, and I'm not gonna tell you that we're right or we're wrong, but it is in the permit. And I happen to be, again, some of the items that are going on down at Bayside Beach Club and the erosion, we're, we have to deal with state agencies, because you have to get an amendment on the permit to not, to change what we're doing, okay? So we are working with them, I'm working with Save Barnegat Bay to help me make some headway with the DEP to get some amendments to the permit that, you know, will change some of the course of action that we do.
Okay, so.
And then again, education is key, and, you know, to educate, educate the residents that are there. And there's been a change in residents down there, you know, with house sales and stuff, and a lot of them don't understand it. They weren't there before Sandy, they just recently moved in, so there's been a lot of changes.
Right, they don't understand it.
Right.
So, but yet, we keep mowing it based on two or three families along that path. Last year.
I'm gonna disagree with you.
Right, last year, after it mowed, after, I went to the park the next Saturday, and I got, in an hour, I got 15 to 20 people to sign a petition saying that they didn't like this happening. That was one hour. So I've got 15 to 20 people here, and I've got two to three families that keep getting catered to. And we keep cut, like, it goes from a beautiful alive park to, like, dead. Breaks my heart. Like, I wanted to actually fall to my knees and cry last year. I was so upset, that for no reason, other than that we can mow, we're mowing. It just doesn't make any sense. So, and I know October 1st is coming up.
Yeah, it is.
Do you know what day they're gonna be mowing?
No, I could look into it, and honestly, I don't, so that period that we can't mow, that's where we'll get fined, okay? So if I mow during that May to October 3rd.
So we don't have to mow October 1st.
I was gonna say, I don't think they're gonna do anything to me if we don't mow. Right. So I can tell Public Works, take it off the plate, we're not gonna mow.
Save taxpayers money.
Because I am trying to get some headway with the DEP to see if I, you know, if I can make some changes to the permit, to allow us to have that more natural habitat there for the monarch butterflies and.
As a town, the town planted it.
Yeah, we were required to plant certain types of plants.
Wait, yet we keep cutting them down. And like I said, in May, when you guys mowed in May, the milkweeds were about this high.
Yes.
Cut them down to the ground, they never had a chance to even bloom. It just doesn't make sense. Just because it's something that you've always done, doesn't mean.
Doesn't make it right.
Doesn't make it right. So I will be chaining myself to the fence next week, so they can't get through. Thank you.
Thank you, DiKoff. Anybody else? Can put it.
Joe Bransford from Forkett River. Many of you know me, I'm here at many meetings, and a former colleague of mine, Ron Martin, is here at almost every meeting. We both have served on the board at Seabreeze, I'm the president for almost the last five years. I just want to say, before the rest of the evening begins, that you are great cheerleaders for this town. We just saw that with what transpired. And you need cheerleaders. Okay, so I'm up here, not as the president of Seabreeze, because I can't say that everyone in Seabreeze, 568 homes, agrees with every decision. But I know our board is thankful for the interactions that we have from you from time to time, that we need to come to you for something, the willingness to listen, even though we may not get everything we talk about. So we're thankful for that. And, and you need to have cheerleaders also, so I'm up here to say those good words. We are probably the largest taxpayer in this township as a group. We pay for all of our own roads, we pay for most of our snow removal and most of our lighting, so these expenses don't even accrue to the town. And yet our taxes are among the highest. So I'm not here to talk about that, I'm here to say thank you for what you do. I'm also here to say, as an individual, that I look at this new building complex with an open mind. We don't know what the number is. I've come to these meetings, it started at 20 million, and then it was 50 million, now I hear 100 million. You know, when it gets to a billion, maybe you'll get my attention, but the process that I understand right now, and we're gonna hear more tonight, I'm sure, is that you're going through the discernment process, the programming process with Johnson Controls. And there's a cost to do that, and what I've read is what it will cost if you stop along the way. So you don't know the number, and you can't know the number until that programming is done, and Johnson Controls, and you agree on size, scope, et cetera. And the only other thing I'll say, is this building was built in 1969, it's 54 years old. I've heard comments about, this isn't the right time. Well, 25 years from now, when it's 79 years old, will that be the right time? You know, computers came to this world about 1981, I was in banking at the time. This building was built before the whole thought of technology and buildings. What will this place require down the road? And if never begun, never achieved. So I leave you with an open mind. I look forward to you go through the process and to see what the true number is, because I'm not hearing what that number is, because you can't possibly know it. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Joe. Hey, Joe, did you cry last Saturday night?
I'm not crying.
Barry, come on down.
We usually keep Barry till the end.
I know, usually the closer, but I guess we're gonna.
Somebody was speaking about something I want to speak about.
Oh, good. Yes, I figured you would have.
I'm gonna raise that up. There we go. Barry Bender, the street that's got old houses on it, that's the south end of town. Talking about the Bayfront Park, the, what's been planted there, is planted there to hold the soil. We've seen the erosion at Bayfront Park, you see it on the, on the private beach side. What's, what I've heard is that where the Gabion has been put in front of that, because they've been watching those baskets, the HESCO baskets that they put out in the water, and they're, they were keeping an eye, they ran out of money, and they're not doing it anymore. But there's a lot of shoaling going on in front of the, where the HESCO baskets are. The effect of that, I'm not sure what that's gonna be, when a storm comes in, how that's gonna affect things. But the planting that's there is to hold the soil. I mean, we have these meetings when people come in and talk about their lagoons filling in, and they can't get their boats in and out. The planting on the shore is what keeps the land in place. That's why it's so important for the plantings to be there. Cutting them defeats the purpose of holding the soil in place, okay? So as Veronica mentioned, education is critical. There hasn't been enough education to the people who live along there. You have, and, and the committee has to understand, planting is critical on the shoreline. When you go to LBI, whatever, and you're walking over those dunes, what's on the dunes? There's planting there that's holding the, you know, ground materials in place. The same thing holds true on Barnegat Bay, and it's critical that that, those plantings be preserved to hold the soil. Because again, the people who are complaining about they want it cut, well, when the soil erodes, and they have the fish having breakfast with them, they're gonna wish that the plants were there. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Barry.
Your name, please?
Roger Lang, Forkett River. Just a little bit about me, disabled veteran who's been paying taxes, is in town for 53 years, so I've seen a lot of stuff go on. And I grew up in a town called Clark Township, central Jersey, and I recently had the opportunity to sort of take a drive-through. Now, Clark used to be a lovely little urban town, just you couldn't ask for anything more. Grew up on a farm, my father-in-law was, I mean, my grandfather was, had a milk farm, great town. You couldn't believe it's been developed into an oblivion. High-rise on farms, next to the reservoir, and no matter where you drive through, it's just, there's no, there's not a square inch of space that has been undeveloped. Not necessarily with things like manufacturing, but just homes that are 20 feet wide and three stories high. So when I hear about a desire to develop, you know, the main arteries here in town, and again, when I first moved here, you could drive a bike anywhere, and you're pretty much okay, you know? So Fridays from Monday, forget trying to use Route 9, it's really horrible. It's really horrible. So, I guess when you decide how you're going to develop these properties, if you could develop in a way that would generate taxes but not congestion, to me, that would be a huge plus. So that's going to require some initiative and-
Yes, it's, it's something that, uh, this is the only site we have control of.
Yeah.
Uh, the other sites are held privately or by the school or whatever. We have an idea of what we'd like to see here. Will it come to fruition? We don't know. It's, it's at least five years down the road.
Yeah.
Before that would happen. If a business come in here and take this over, sure, that would be great.
Yeah.
Is it possible? I have no idea. We might be a victim of our own success, because we've done such a good job, previous council's done such a good job of developing the town and keeping the taxes low, that we, you might consider us a victims of our own success.
Yeah, so, okay, it's just my experience, my lineage here, and, uh, we don't need more strip malls. Or three-story-high, twenty-foot-wide homes here.
No, I understand that, understand. Thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
This lady here.
My name is Carolyn Worsor. First, I want to say thank you to Public Works for responding so quickly to my request to clear the storm drain on Bayway. Awesome job right before the border. I want to talk about infrastructure.
Can you just get a little closer, because it's hard to hear?
Okay, infrastructure. My background is in, I work with townships up north, and I've worked on, um, traffic calming issues. And I know we've, Veronica and I have talked about speed in town. Infrastructure as we grow to make the residents safe, and I used to be able to walk and play in the street in front of my house, and I now wear an orange vest to walk my dog. Not good, so. In that note, I have something really wonderful that I found, which is, there's a traffic study, I don't know how you get to that for Bayway.
Um, they are working on it.
Okay.
Yes, they're working on it. Normally, and I'm going to tell you the funny part, so I had a conversation with the engineering firm, and they said, oh, this is an unusual request, because normally we don't get requests to decrease the speed. It's only to increase the speed, because nobody does the speed limit. So basically, most of the time, these surveys are done on what the current conditions of the road are. I said, I don't care what the current conditions of the road are. I'm looking to reduce the speed. They're like, okay, we have to look at this a different way.
Okay. And I did some research, because up north, in the projects I've worked on up north, there's a group in New York that, um, a lot of them don't like cars, so there's a lot of walkable communities are a big thing. Traffic calming is a huge thing. Rutgers, and I had, I've got this for you, Rutgers Eighteenth and Nineteenth is having a webinar. It's free. It's run by the DOT, and it's paid for by New Jersey Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration.
What's the, what's the webinar on?
Complete Streets.
Traffic Calming. I'm going to give this to you.
Oh, okay, thank you.
If you guys don't know about it, do you know about it?
I, I think, I got an email on several of it the other day.
Okay, because I did post it around a little bit, but it's geared towards municipal managers, public works, law enforcement, and elected officials to go to this webinar. I'm going, or I signed up for it. There's a second one on October 1st at Rutgers, New Jersey Bicycle and Pedestrian Resource Center. It is free. It's all the leading, so what I'm looking for is nomenclature. I, I know nomenclature from a different district. I don't know it for here, so I'm attending both of these events to learn the nomenclature so I can share with you guys. I'm hoping you can join us.
Those are the webinars, right, that you're talking about?
There's a webinar and there's an in-person. The webinar is six hours, and you get college credits for it.
I believe them.
There's a webinar that's only three hours, too.
It's three hours each day.
Okay.
You can attend what you want. It's also open to the public. Anybody can join, I have the information. The other thing I want to share with you is that the U.S. Department of Transportation Safe Streets, Roads for All Grant Program Bipartisan Infrastructure Law. So there are five billion dollars that needs to get spent between twenty-two and twenty-six for safe roadways for pedestrians. So I'm going to leave this with somebody, all three of those leads.
Give it to Veronica, hold on, please.
So, again, it's open to the public. If we want safe streets, if we want a walkable community, if we want to bring real high quality to our residents, I'm sorry, I like to ride my bike. I haven't in four years, because I'm a, I'm afraid that I'm going to get killed, and I'm afraid for my dog, that I now have a flashing leash that I have to use. And I get screamed at by cars going by, going, get out of the street. It's not fair to us. I want to walk and ride my bike. So I thank you, but thanks again for the gutter.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Gavin, I'll get to you next. Tony, come on down. There we go.
Sonia Rizzoli, Sunrise Beach. I have a question on Resolution Twelve tonight, twenty-twenty-three, two-eighty-two. That's for the canceling taxes for, due for properties acquired by the township. What was the location of the property?
Those are in the Phase Three of the Walters Development Group Affordable Housing right next to Ocean First Bank and behind Ocean First Bank.
And how much property is it acres or what?
Yeah, it's, it's acres. It's block eighteen-fifty-two and eighteen-fifty-three, so it's the parcel next to the bank on the west side, and then all of the property behind the bank up into the apartments, and it goes out to, um, I guess it's north over there.
Okay, so the township took ownership?
Yes.
What's the plans for the property?
I just said it's the third phase of Walters Development Group Affordable Housing. It's to meet our, um, prior round approvals. We're still not in compliance with what was settled back in the, um, two thousand seventeen. We still had seventy units to build, and that will complete that. And now we have future units to still build on future growth.
Okay, so it's for prior commitments, though? I was just wondering what it's going to be used for. The other thing is, on the last meeting, there was discussion about the lines from the windmills coming up the Forkett River to the property and the infrastructure that was the power plant. And I believe, Mr. Kennas, you addressed an ordinance that these lines were going to go up the, the Forkett River, and I have a question. Do you know the depth that those lines have to be at? The placement of those lines in proximity to existing bulkheads on the river? Is there going to be demolition?
They're not going. They're going, they're, it's coming on Finiger's Farm. I mean, facing Finiger's Farm on the left-hand side.
Okay, but it's still coming up the river from the windmills out in the ocean.
Tony, on Saturday, there's actually a, um, virtual, um, public meeting that you can sit in on Saturday. The link is posted on our website, and you can ask questions there. That Ocean Wind is, um, holding.
Okay, I went to a previous, you know, ocean meeting, and, and no one seemed to give me the answer I'm looking for. My concerns are, if we have to run lines up the river, is there going to be a negative effect on our property owners' bulkheads?
So, so the, I mean, the point of me mentioning it was, they already, they received their approvals already.
I, I understand that.
So, and I think, as far as planning board approval, um, they didn't need approval for those lines, I don't believe. I can't remember, because, because it's so long ago, it was eighteen months ago, so, or thereabouts. And so, whatever they submitted at, at that time, it was public comment at that time, and it was voted on, it passed, um, and, uh-
We had to clean up what we were going to do from the township to enable that.
They got their local approvals, and then they went and got, they had to get DEP approvals for putting that line in. So, I, I saw a copy of it, and they were issued their, their tree clearing permit, I think, last Friday. So they have all their local approvals. Whether, any other approvals that they needed outside of Lacy Township was, is their responsibility, but they have the local approvals.
They have receipt of all of the federal state approvals.
Yeah, I think, yes, they have all their approvals.
It's all part of the New Jersey Energy Master Plan.
All right, so we don't have any say if, if it negatively affects our residents' bulkheads. That was my concern.
It's basically a utility that's covered under the Board of Public Utilities.
So it would have to be a state, the state. My concern is this, if they have to go nine foot down, they got to go into the bedrock, they're going to be using dynamite or whatever to blow the bedrock up, and those people have houses right there.
They're going to be trenching in on Finiger's Farm with a backhoe, I would imagine.
Yeah, but that's, I'm talking about along the river.
They're going, they're not on the river, they're on, facing Finiger's Farm on the left-hand side, Cloon Park, like, adjacent to Cloon Park.
Like Cloon Park that they're going in, in the land, not up the channel.
I'd have to show you on a map.
Not going up the river, it's off in the ocean. Okay, then I was-
Like I said, on, on our website, there's a link for Saturday's meeting. It is from two to four on Saturday. It's a virtual, um, meeting for, um, anybody that has any questions about the upcoming work that will begin.
Okay, because the last meeting I went to, they were talking about lines going up the river, and I'm going, could be a problem.
They had three different routes at one time, and they had to then choose a route, and they chose the route along the Finiger's Farm property.
Okay, so, all right, well, that was the last meeting I went to, they hadn't chose, so, okay, now, yes, I'm coming to you about the municipal complex. You know, I'm not a Republican, I'm not a Democrat, I'm a loud-mouthed independent. I hate you all equally. You know, you've heard all of this before, but I have some concerns. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it. I'm not saying we should do it, but there are things I'd like you to consider. When I come here, a lot of times I offer suggestions. Some you take, some you don't. We had a discussion, I had a discussion today about, you know, credit cards, and why can't we do it? We don't have a cr, you know, we don't have affinity in the town that could come forward. Maybe another bank will step, step up.
But that's not for the taxpayers' program.
I know, but they made ninety grand for their rescue squad and whatever, how they had to do.
Whatever qualifying, none of them.
That's tax relief for the taxpayer. That's the way I look at it, okay? Things to consider, this building was built in nineteen sixty-nine. You're all elected officials. The members of the Board of Education are all elected officials. People in town say, they're all elected officials. It's township land. They don't know the difference. They don't come to these meetings. They don't listen. They look at, Forkett River School was built in nineteen fifty-two. This building was built in nineteen sixty-nine. This building houses adults, not all who are township residents, and they need more space. That was the thing, space, correct?
One of them.
Tonight, you said money. But it's always, when I listened, it was always, we need more space. Okay, so I came up with a list of things to address space. Nineteen fifty-two, the building is that much older. This building has adults. That building has preschool kids and our future residents. More cons, I'm more concerned about the age of that building than I am about the age of this building from a taxpayer's perspective. If I was to choose what to sell, I'd sell that building. Okay, there's more land. You don't have control, I understand that.
You're at the wrong board for that.
I understand that, but I'm saying it, a lot of people don't realize the absolute difference, but you do have influence. You do have somebody who sits there and helps. You gave money to them already, and maybe they should give money back. Okay, yeah, it's out of the box. It's, it's crazy. Why not ask? Why not ask the township what the township would like to do? You see, if they run out of space, as all schools do, all over the, all over the state and all over the country, they use trailers. They put kindergarten kids in first grade through fourth grade in trailers attached to the school. Have we considered trailers for this building? Don't answer the question. Don't answer the question. I'm just saying, things to consider, that's all. Alternatives, again, nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen fifty-two. Not all the residents who work here are residents. Every kid in that school is a resident, and it affects them, and they're in an older building, okay? That's the reason I brought it up, because to me, seems to be something wrong with the priorities here. I'm more concerned about the priorities of our future residents than I am about the resident and non-residents that work in this confined space of a building, okay?
Confined.
Alternatives. During a pandemic, we had off-site, remote work. We even had off-site, remote teaching, okay? Maybe it could be expanded, that there's off-site, remote work, you wouldn't have that much of a space problem, because the only people you would need in the building are the actual people who deal with customers, residents, building people, people who are up front. You go to a bank, you got how many people in the background? The only people that talk, tellers. There may be one supervisor. We could do, maybe do something like that. Off-site, remote work for our employees who meet once a week in the conference room, which I've been in with you, as you well know, okay? Once a week to get their stuff together, lay out their plans. It's doable. Shift work. Why does everybody have to work during the day? A lot of the work can be done at different hours in a day, okay? It doesn't have, we got a police department that works twenty-four-seven. They're employees. Do we have anybody in this building who works different hours, other than the hours that's easy for them? How about for us? You work for us. We tell you when to work, we tell you where to work. You don't like it, go find a job someplace else. These are only suggestions, I'm not saying to do it. It's your decision, it's not mine. I make you feel a little guilty, okay? Minimal staff. Again, if you do shift work, if you do remote work, you can work with minimal staff, that solves your space problem, okay? I'm an HR guy, I look at this kind of stuff. If it's a negotiation thing with a union organization, build it into the contract, build it into the union language, if that's what you have to do. I mean, local, what is it? Local eighty-four is Department of Public Works? I used to deal with Carl Watson.
That's not, they're, that's not, they're not local eighty-four.
No, well, local.
Ninety-seven. Ninety-seven. It's Teamsters ninety-seven.
I dealt with Teamsters, you know, back, okay? I was in the back of the seat of the pink Cadillac negotiating contracts. Anyway, redesign of the building. There was an individual who came up at the last meeting, said he was, he did things in New York City, okay? The bill, the building needs infrastructure redesign. As the guy who just came up said, you know, it was, computers came in, you need new things, but it's a lot less expensive than a brand-new building. To be considered, not to do it, to be considered. You guys make the decision. You're not letting the public vote on it, so you have to make that decision, make the right one, or Peggy's not going to get re-elected, you know? What can I say? On-site trailers, again. On-site trailers, got plenty of room in the back to put on-site trailers if you need it, and the space was really that important.
How do we do the police department with on-site trailers?
I've, I've seen-
How do we expand the police department? How do we expand the police department with on-site trailers?
Well, the thing about the police department might be that it's, it could be an expanded building, or a different building could be used as an auxiliary police office, okay? That might be a possibility to look at, right?
There are requirements, DOJ requirements as it relates to the department.
I'm just trying to say-
Well, I'm just, you know-
Be outside of the box, and maybe come up with something.
I have a question for you, though, just all serious. Why is it you think we're not thinking outside the box?
Because I haven't heard any other alternatives.
Well, but we, we, we are in, in our heads, you know, working to figure out-
I'm not saying you're wrong.
-the best way to go.
I'm not saying you're wrong, but I didn't hear any other alternatives, and that's why I'm bringing them forward.
Because there's a lot that we can't do. We also, we have so many rules we have to follow, too.
Okay, then do this. Would you be so kind as these things that I brought up, okay? Bring them to the public, to let the public know that you thought of these things and why you said no to them. It's a matter just of communication. You guys may be 100% right, prove it to us, that's all. Just prove it to us. If we gotta pay, we gotta pay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time. Gavin, come on down. Gavin, come on, Gavin.
Good evening. Gavin Rozzi, Forkett River, New Jersey, and just picking up from last time with the municipal complex. Like I said, you know, I'm not opposed to infrastructure modernization, you know? I think there are reasonable paths forward for us to kind of move into the 21st century, but my concerns are rooted in the size, shape, and scope of this agreement with Johnson Controls. So since we had the last meeting, I took a look, I actually took a step back in time, back to 2021, and I looked at some of the resolutions, and I wanted to get fully informed about some of these other issues. And I really have some grave concerns about how this township has navigated this entire public-private partnership process, and my concerns are rooted in Resolution 2021-137. So if you'll recall, that was the initial resolution where the governing body acknowledged the receipt of the unsolicited proposal. I read the text of that resolution, and I, I find it interesting, you know, the date that we received officially in the public notice is, it was like May 13th of that year. In less than 24 hours, we reviewed this proposal to make the determination in Resolution 137 that it met all of the factors within the P3 regulations. I'm not saying there's any impropriety, but wow, you know, that's a, that's a quick turnaround for an unsolicited proposal. We review it, you know, the, the same night, and, and it's out the door. But that's not even my, my biggest concern. My biggest concern with respect to that resolution stems in the P3 regulations. So the P3 regulations, NJAC 17:49-6.4A, I know, it's a mouthful, a local government may accept unsolicited proposals from private entities for public-private partnership agreements. Okay, that's, that makes sense. Part two of that regulation, a local government unit shall develop a process for accepting unsolicited proposals in expectation of receipt of an unsolicited proposal. Okay, so at, at that meeting, the governing body passed that resolution acknowledging the proposal. But it's my position that that was fatally defective, because this governing body passed that resolution acknowledging receipt of the said proposal without having that written policy in place. And I, I got all the emails from the state regulators, Jennifer Maloney, you know, all the point people up there, it, it appeared to be a concern on her end. So, so then, we, we kind of took a second bite at the apple. On July 8th, 2021, nearly two months later, the governing body adopted Resolution 2021-202 that finally established that requisite policy. And, and then, on that same night, we did kind of this do-over, and we passed Resolution 2021-203 acknowledging the unsolicited proposal for a second time, and all of the public notices were based on that. I have not seen any action, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, I haven't seen anything in the minutes or anything on the township code rescinding this initial defective resolution, and I, I kind of think it's just the fruit of the poison in his tree, because if you look at what happens in the state regulations, it's, it's very specific. It says in NJAC 17:49-6.4E2, and it says, "The township must provide notice of the proposal at its next scheduled public meeting of the government unit and to the state treasurer." Now, there's no question, you provided notice of the proposal in 137, but I, I really think it's fatally defective, because everything in 137, you just recited all the factors in the state regulations. They were conclusory statements saying that we met each and every one of these criteria. So, you know, my perception here is just a member of the public, it, it seems to me that this was a done deal and a foregone conclusion as far back as 2021, and, and we're kind of just jumping the shark on this, and, you know, the state regulations are silent as to whether you will actually get a do-over on this. I feel, you know, based on the text of the regulations, it doesn't say anything about a do-over like that. It says that you need to place the reasons on the record at the initial meeting, in both the resolution and on the record of the, the discussion of the governing body. So I really have some grave concerns about that, and you know, this is just my opinion. My opinion is, you know, that this entire process has been tainted by what I consider procedural irregularities and these apparent violations of the state regulations. So it's an open question, you know, when this goes to Treasury, you know, that's their determination to make, if you end up proceeding with that Treasury submission. But I did write a lengthy letter to, to the Treasury folks calling some of this out, and I really have grave concerns about this process. And you know, based on that, again, you know, it's my position, I think we need to go back to the drawing board, I think we need to look at alternate options, I think we need to look at other possible avenues of achieving these goals. And then another concern, you know, just this week, it was announced that Johnson Controls suffered a, a massive ransomware attack, you know? And, and this happens, you know, they're not the only ones that get hacked, people get hacked all the time, but you know, we can just add this to the laundry list of reasons why I feel, and many other people feel, that this deal is not in the best interest of the residents of Lacey. There's other solutions? Thank you. If you look at other municipalities, I'm sure everybody saw what Barnegat was doing. Again, you know, I haven't looked into them nearly as much as Lacey, but I understand their new building was built in the neighborhood of like 12.9 million or something, so, look.
It's not finished, and they are calling on the bonds because the contractor is not able to complete the job, and it's cost them millions in overruns.
Interesting. Thank you for that. But, you know, the point still remains, I think, you know, it's the wrong project, I think we need to go back to the drawing board. I hear what you're saying about the taxes in the Lacey Road corridor, I understand that interest, I think there's other ways we could accommodate this in a more modest and a more reasonable approach, and I, I thank you very much for the time.
Thank you for your time. Any other comments from the father?
Good evening. Steve Barle, Forkett River, New Jersey, resident here since 1962. Before I get to my primary purpose, I do want to make a couple comments. I mean, I heard from the committee tonight about the good work of the township workers, would I, which I do agree with. However, when they drain the lakes, and I drive by them, there's old bicycles, boards, beer bottles, cans, whatnot, all over the edge, around every single lake. And maybe the committee ought to look into that, so that next time you drain the lakes, which you shouldn't in the wintertime, because that helps kill all the reptiles, they should clean it. If they're doing that good of a job, because they are a hazard for people, swimmers, whatever. And the other comment I'd like to make is on the third lake. I don't know how much the township spent to put the bathhouse, change the road, put the fence up, elongate the beach, thousands and thousands, and yet every year, that beach is closed because of, what reason?
The dam.
You're the Health Department, right?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, you, you take the water samples. If the third lake, hold on, can I just make a statement before? The third lake drains into the second lake, the second lake's okay, but the lake that feeds it is not okay. So if the lake that feeds it not okay, then how is the second lake okay? It's a, people ask me this, I say, I, next meeting, I'll ask it.
Yeah, so we take our samples from the time when the beach, we, actually, two weeks before, it's called Cooperative Coastal Monitoring Program, CCMP, but for freshwater lakes, it's, it's not part of the actual, because saltwater is the bathing beach locations for cooperative coastal monitoring, but nonetheless, we take these samples, it's a very strict methodology, and the lake in the middle beach where the whippet is did not experience one exceedance all year. So where the majority of our people recreate, we have had no exceedances, and there's more people and life in that lake, and, and that's one of, that, that lake in particular has been very clean. Now, when you talk about a sample, Steve, Mr. Barle, you're talking about a snapshot in time. We, we sample these bodies of water, 62 of them around the county, once a week, we happen to do the lakes here on Tuesday mornings around 7:00 AM. So we get a representative sample, but that's what it is, it's a sample. It's taken on ice to the Ocean County Utilities Authority, a licensed laboratory, and then we get those results, and we post them for the sake of transparency. So we do that there at that lake where the whippet is, and so what question do you have?
Is the third lake polluted? Why isn't it utilized? You got a beach that's gated every summer.
Right, you're talking about Deerhead Lake?
Yeah, this is the third lake, you got the Millipon, the second lake, and that was always called the third lake.
We, we know-
You just tell me why, you don't have to go into a bit lengthy thing.
No, we don't test that.
I got a lot more other important things.
So I can't really comment on it, we don't-
Right, and I know you don't want to hear from me, Steve, but I'm going to explain it, because in 2005, we were mandated by the state of New Jersey to redesign that lake, which also mandated us to redesign the road. So we did that, and the horseshoe of the, the dam grew much bigger, I'm sure you were familiar with the prior one. It lowered the level of the lake, which caused the sunlight to hit the, the bottom of the lake and cause more vegetation and more growth, which does call, cause higher levels of bacteria. And while I agree with you, it's strange how the third lake could have a higher level of bacteria, which drains the second lake, but the second lake is fine. But that is why we stopped with the swimming and authorizing, because it was closed too much. We are working with the DEP now, because we lost about three feet of water because of the larger horseshoe, and if we could raise the water level, we would be able to utilize that lake, and the lake would not have such areas of pollution due to the sunlight hitting the bottom and allowing the growth of the vegetation.
Some of those things that Veronica just mentioned, our, our environmental health coordinator, he has a bullet point list of about six different reasons why that, that lake has had difficulty in passing in the past, and that's why we use the other lake now.
Okay, technically, they're not lakes, that was just a stream that went through there, okay? And the problem with the township, they should have been dug out when they made them into lakes. So they're not really lakes, they're just an overflow of a stream that's dammed up, and that's the problem, they're not deep enough, that's why you have lakes so close to grow the bacteria. But anyway, if, I, I just had to ask the question. So I'll move on. Okay, before I get to my point, we did have a gentleman come up here about how much it is, and as if people are just making the, the money up. We're not making it up. It's based, we're going on base bottom $50 million. Is it true, Mr. Mayor, that you have to spend at least $50 million in order to sign up with Johnson and the PPP program?
No.
No? What is the bottom line?
With Johnson? They, they don't have one with Johnson.
So you could go below 50?
Yes.
You could go way below 50?
Well, no, at one point-
Well, why don't you do that instead of-
Hey, let me finish.
Go ahead.
At some point in time, the P, the P3 program won't, won't work, because the state won't allow it. They want certain numbers.
50 million?
That was the number that was tossed out, but then when we were talking to them back in April, I believe it was, because they changed the people, they, they had a change in positions. So we had, we requested a meeting with them, just to, just introduce ourselves and see where they were going. Originally, they wanted 100 million.
The state of New Jersey.
The state of New Jersey, and we said, absolutely, it wasn't going to work, and they came up with some, and I think I said this before, that they had turned down, what was it, Splash Park?
At 25 million.
At 25 million dollars, things like that. When we explained what we were trying to do, they were okay with it. They didn't give us an exact number, but they said they'd like to be around 50 million. But they didn't say 50 million's a cut.
Well, as far as I know, and I know this process hasn't been transparent since I've been going to meetings since March, I still haven't gotten any work orders to fix this building, other than, which I felt was a, just a smokescreen, was to get that engineer, where we paid him $35,000 for this add-on, a 32,000 square foot add-on to this building, which I have yet to find out what you're going to put in 32,000 square extra feet in this building. And I agree, maybe the police building should need an addition on it, but that's separate. I'm mainly concerned, and some good points were brought up tonight, shift work is a very, I worked in a building, 1,000 employees, guess what? We had three shifts. And as you got more seniority, you got on a day shift. But when you didn't have seniority, you might have had to work afternoon or nights. And that's really something that would help the public, not a, a tax increase. You're, everyone up here is talking about other tax increases without even hitting the municipal tax increase. So when we come up with numbers, individuals got to remember, they have no money. Everything that's going into this is all borrowed. Borrowed money is, is got interest. You buy a house for $100,000, when you pay that off, you might pay 300,000. When you guys do this, and I did a middle-of-the-line estimate just on 50 million without the maintenance, without being going above it, and it came out at $119 million that we'll have to pay back. That's a lot of money. That's 69 million dollars of interest coming out of us. And then when people say, well, I might be for it, that is the first person that I've spoke to since February that is kind of agreeing with you. And, which leads me, again, that I believe the township is not following the law. The law says very specifically, it must have public backing, it must have the interest of the public, it must benefit the public, and yet, in your- in your recital, again, which I, I can't believe you even said it last time I was up here, that the five of you determine that for 30,000 of us, without taking in consideration the financial circumstances. You know, if you're rich and you live in a fancy retirement development, another thousand dollars a year is nothing. It's nothing. But you know, to the everyday person, that means a lot. People like me, people like my neighbors, a lot of people that wish they could come here, but they can't, because they got to work two jobs to support their family. And the escalation of taxes is going to hurt the everyday people. They're going to have less money for their bills, less money to care for their children, less money for enjoyment, vacation, and Christmas. But who cares? I care. My family owns six houses in this town, and I'm going to fight this to the end, and I'm going to the state next. Now, when, when, it talks about public, we got public people here. How many people here want them to build this municipal complex? Not a single person. Now, there's a, there's a footprint of the public right in this building, other than the one man who, think about that he might want it. He might be in a financial position where it don't matter to him, and it don't matter to people who have got money. But you look at the people here, there ain't no one here that wants that. None of us want it. Shift work would be the first way I would go. That would be the easiest. So anyways, I need to know how you guys determined that this is in the best interest of the public. Who in the public did you talk to? When did you have town halls to introduce it? I know you made a mention of it last November. Did you tell them how much it was going to cost? Did you tell them that they're going to maintain it for 30 years? Did you tell them that you have no money for it? Did you tell them that you, we the public are going to pay all the interest money on it? Was that said last November? How do I get a copy of what was said last November? Because I really need that, because everyone on this panel goes back to this one meeting in November, oh, we, we told the public, we told them, what'd you tell them? Can you tell me, Mr. Mayor? Can you give me an overview of what you said last November? As far as, and include financial transparency, because that's part of the law.
As I have told you many, many times, we don't know the final numbers.
Well, what's a, you got to have a number. You got to have a number, and you should re- you got to have a number. Now, you mean to tell me, look, look, I've negotiated things-
You ask me a question, you're going to let me answer?
Okay, go ahead.
No, no, you go ahead, no, you go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
You mean to tell me, you expect me to stand here and believe that when you had that meeting on April 14th, after you had the real fast one here, changed it by a half hour, went with Johnson Controls, at the conclusion of the meeting, you didn't come up with a number that you could live with?
No, we didn't.
You didn't?
It's a negotiation.
So how'd that meeting end? I need to know.
We continue to work together and negotiate. That's how the meeting ended, exactly how the meeting ended.
So what's, what's-
I'll, I'll, I'll address your, so I'll use your numbers, since we don't have any numbers, I'll use your numbers. So 120 million, your number, right? 120 million.
My number is based on 15 million.
No, 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 what's your, 120 million, you just said it.
With the, with the interest?
120 million.
119.
120, okay, 1, we'll call it, no, we'll use 120.
Oh, okay.
We'll make a, we'll add a million, we're just going to add a million. So 120 million divided by 30 years, which is still not what we're, we don't know if that's the number yet, is 4 million a year. We have 15,530 line items in the township, it's a ratable line item, so that comes out to, per year, on the average line item, $257.
Well, I would like to see that in writing, when you put that in writing.
That's your number.
Okay, well, you give me your number, you got to, you guys got to have a number.
I just did, 257.
You can't sit here in front of me.
257 dollars.
When you've been with this company for almost a year now.
I just gave you.
And you have no number that you put in?
Your number, 120 million.
How much of our tax bill comes back to the municipality? I was just curious if you know that. How much of the tax bill that you receive comes back to the municipality?
I, I don't really care about that. I care about my taxes going up.
You don't care about that.
I care about my taxes going up. However the system's built, it's built, I can't change it. I know the schools take a lot of the money, I'm not dummy.
We've been, we've been holding budget meetings, I said, for 10 years, you heard my comments, you have never been to one of those budget meetings.
Why can't we?
Not one budget meeting have you ever been to.
Why can't we?
How many of your budget meetings have you been to?
When's the next one? When's the next one?
We do them from February to April. We start them in February. When was the last time you've been to one?
I've never been to one.
Exactly.
So what's that got to do with the building?
You're complaining about costs, and you never showed up to a budget meeting.
Why don't you do a presentation right now, Steve, on the, on the condition of the property?
Because you're doing a great job, keep going.
Look, hey, you know, when people get upset, I usually tell them the truth. That's the way it usually works. But anyways, if you guys terminate this contract, you got this predetermined thing. Or do you, do you have to pay the millions of dollars?
No.
None of it?
They have, we will, we will have to pay that. If we decide to go forward and then cancel it. In other words, we say, okay, we're going to do this, and then we have an epiphany and say, you know, this is stupid to do. And we, we don't, they have to get paid for the work. Okay? So the first part of it is what, two hundred and some odd thousand dollars? That's their plans, their architects and things like that. They're doing this until, once we get, we would pay for that anyhow if we went forward the whole thing. It's all built in.
Right, if you want forward for it. But we don't want you to go forward with it.
If we stopped at, say, in the third month, then we would owe them some money, absolutely. But as of right now, we don't have anything from them, they don't have anything from us. We're just talking, we're negotiating right now.
Well, why can't you have a town meeting and announce it more publicly what your intentions are? What are the parameters of the money? And what, how is it going to affect our tax base?
You can say, we haven't been talked about this. This has been talked about on and off for six or seven years. It's gotten, it's gotten.
Well, I'll tell you, Steve, when I go around town, I'm around every day now, I'm retired. I ask people about the new municipal complex. And I would say, without exaggerating, at least half of them don't even know what it is.
You could go, I stopped, I stopped posting on my Twitter account from two thousand twenty when I was mayor, I was posting on Twitter. I mentioned the municipal complex back then.
Okay, well, as this goes, as this goes.
And that was just then. I did, it's been mentioned prior to that, too.
As this goes, we're not going to give up. We're going to come here every meeting, and we're going to talk about the same things every meeting. We're going to talk about why there's no town hall. We're going to talk about non, non-financial transparency. And we're going to talk about the preamble, or whatever that is, that you say that it's the best for us. And I need someone to explain that, other than how did you determine that? Do you know, Mr. Mayor?
How do we determine?
How did you, five people determine? Here, I go right here.
Okay.
I'll read it again. Whereas on or about seventeenth day of February twenty twenty-two, township determined that the project was in the best interest of the public and authorized representatives and authorized representatives of the township to negotiate a proposed public-private partnership agreement with Johnson Controls. Okay. Did you go through the doors? Did you ask, did you ask anyone in the public?
Okay.
How, how, I, I, I need to know how you determined that.
We made a determination.
On based on what?
Let me, will you let me finish? Are you going to continue to run?
Okay, sorry, sorry, Tim, sorry.
Okay. We made a determination that we were looking at taking care of this building. That was the first step we did. What would it cost to bring this building up to today's standards? Okay? We got an estimate. And if you, let me finish. If you, if you, if you go back, you'll see that Veronica actually mentioned in the paper, it was twenty-five million dollars. And I, we said, wait a minute, let's get a real, a real number. That's when we decided to get the engineer's report. At the same time, we were entertaining non-solicited proposal. Okay. When we sat down with Johnson, the bottom line is, we don't pay a dime on this until they give us the keys.
Right, right.
Okay? So it didn't, wait a minute, let me finish. It doesn't hurt for us to go forward on this, to find out which is the best way to go. And I have said to you, and so you've come to here, no decision has been made.
Okay.
And you keep saying, we're going forward. Would I think it's the best thing to do? Most likely.
You already?
I know, I said.
At least three of you have admitted you're going to go for it.
I've been very honest about it, I think it's probably the best way to go. But I want to see the numbers first.
Yeah, none of us made a decision. I know you keep thinking we have, but we haven't, because we don't have the numbers.
We don't have the numbers.
Look, when this first started, I came up here three times to get an estimate to fix the building. I got the runaround. Then it was at an engineer. The engineer report is not to fix this building. It might have some of it, but it's to put a giant addition on, for thirty-five million dollars. Thirty-two thousand foot addition. And a ten thousand foot addition on the police station.
Correct.
So when you say that you were waiting to find out what it costs to fix this building, that engineer's report is a smokescreen, because it's, it's, it's far less. Why can't you get an engineer's report just to fix this though, whatever wrong? The roof, the windows, the floor.
Let me say something, Mayor, if I could. Let me ask you something, Steve. You know, you, you're coming up here. We're here in good faith. Do you think we're trying to do something illegal here? You've been dancing around. Do you think we're hiding something from, from our neighbors, our people? Because I would take exception. We could have spirited debate back and forth. But when you start throwing veiled accusations of some impropriety, deputy mayor or or mayor, who have been here combined, I don't know, eighty, ninety years, like yourself, like yourself and your family. Do you think we're trying to do something untoward? Because if you're, if you feel that way, I need you to come out and say it, so we don't do this dance.
What I feel is, I think you guys are going to approve it and then tell us. That's how I feel, that you're just maneuvering in the background.
You were told, hold on, no, no. You were told, you were told, wait, you were told last meeting by Mr. Connors, how this whole thing will go. And by law, we've got to do that. And we, we're going to follow it. It's as simple as that.
Well, I respectfully disagree that you're following it.
Okay.
I respectfully disagree.
You have your right to.
I'm not saying you're doing anything illegal, but there is an appearance that you're not following the public-private partnership laws. And you know, the other big thing is, why has, since two thousand and eighteen, no other municipal complex in the state of New Jersey has been built? That right there should tell you enough. There's something wrong with it. Something's up, and we all feel it, we all know it. You could say what you want, but I don't think you guys have been completely transparent. This preamble thing about us, best interest for us, this is dated back in April. I believe we had to go through some kind of request for information to get it. And we just got it maybe weeks ago. So you didn't harbor this document from us since February?
It's been on the website since the day it was adopted. All of our resolutions and ordinances are on the municipal website.
Whatever, I don't care. It needs to be discussed, it needs to be discussed here.
You just said we held it from you.
You just said we held it from you. Veronica just said from the day, probably the next morning, it was up on our website. We have held nothing back, and I resent you saying that.
It should be discussed here. This is where you meet the public.
It was done in a meeting.
You know what, you know how many people in this township go on that website?
Well, whose fault is that? Is that our fault?
It's our fault. It's our fault, because we're too busy working to pay taxes.
And we all do the same thing. We're all paying taxes and working too.
Yeah. All right, well, I'll be here, maybe next meeting, maybe not. But please, public hearings and an advisory committee should be established with us and you, half and half. And then we go through the buildings, and we go through everything to find out what's really wrong.
Thank, thank you.
What's wrong with that?
Thank you for your comments.
They don't like that.
They didn't say that. Yes, love that.
I'm the fellow who got up first, that was just referenced by, I think it's Steve. And with all due respect, I'm going to talk to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Because I want to set the record straight. Number one, when I got up here, all I said was, I'm open to the process of determining what this building will cost. That's all I said. I didn't say I supported it. I didn't say I was for it. So that's record number one. And I want to correct the misperception about Seabreeze being a place of wealthy people. Yes, we have some wealthy people at Seabreeze, but that doesn't mean that everyone at Seabreeze is wealthy. I know two-thirds of that family, of the families at Seabreeze by name. And I can tell you the struggles that some of them have. They moved down here in retirement, they saved for their life, and they came here, and they love living here. They love being part of this town. And so please don't try to divide this town, because you think there's wealthy people over there. And by the way, in defense of Seabreeze, sixty percent or more of our taxes go to the public school system, which helps every other taxpayer in this town, and we don't send a child through the school system. So remember that, please. When we have to spend a million or a million and a half to pave a section of roads, that saves the other taxpayers in town money also. So there are benefits that accrue to having wealthy people, but they are not all wealthy by any means. And I want to correct that record.
Thank you. Any other comments in the public? Just, hold on, let this lady wait here.
My name is Marge Turner, I'm a resident here in Fork River. I hear a lot of things, a lot of numbers, and I don't know exactly how this process works. All right. But I'm hearing crazy numbers. So you're saying that we have no idea how much this is going to cost yet? Okay? So are we at the stage where it's going to cost us milestone one, two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars to find out what this stage is?
No.
Because that appeared to be what.
We have to, we would have to receive and accept their final proposal and agree to it. Then what would happen, and would happen, for that, for us to have to pay that, okay? We would have to say, three months down the road, we change our minds, and we walk away from the project. Okay? That, then we would have to pay that. Once we agree to accept it, that kicks in, that keeps us in, you know, working forward. Those, those charges are going to be there whether we do it or not. If we decide not to do it, we, we're done.
And you're not going to have to pay?
Nope. No, if we just, we look at the numbers, say, you know, this is dumb, we're not going to do this project, walk away. That's the risk that Johnson Controls takes.
All right, so really, in a sense that if they present something to you, and you look at this and say, no, this is not going to fly, then we don't owe them a dime, not for anything, for other engineering services and other consequences?
Consequences. Okay, I, I believe, so that resolution that you're talking about, where it had a block of this phase, yes. So, so yes, right now, we could be on the hook for, I think the first thing was two hundred and some odd thousand dollars. Yeah, yes. If we walked away from this, we could be on the hook for that much money, right? So the further we go in the process, as you, if you read that resolution, that there's more cost analysis and stuff like that as we go through. So let's say we hit every single marker in that list, right? And then, let's say that takes two years. We walk away from it, and all those markers are done, state approvals were given, and we decide not to do it. We could be on the hook for all of that money. Yes.
A possibility, correct.
Possibility, if we walk away from it.
Right, if we walk away from it.
Yes. Otherwise, those costs are rolled into the complete project.
Right, right.
I have one more to go.
Yeah, right.
I'll have more questions, but that's it for now.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Regina, come on. Thank God you're giving people the hour.
I just have a couple of questions, but I wanted to know if you knew about Littman case? Do you know what happened to Jonathan?
I'm not going to talk about that, but yes, I do.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to make sure, because he was harassing me too.
Yeah, yes, every one of us.
All of you. I have a copy of that pre, pre-development agreement, and it was from Jen Abbott at Johnson Controls. Did she send that draft over the way it was, and then it went back and forth with Jerry Dasty? Who actually wrote it, do you know?
It's a combination of the attorneys, their, their legal team and our legal team.
Okay, because there's a guy that signed it at the end, and it doesn't indicate that he's a attorney. It's signed by Claudio Andretta, executive director, public-private partnerships.
For JCI.
Right, but he's not a lawyer.
Doesn't, the, did Chris Connor sign it? He's our lawyer.
No, but.
Okay, so there you go.
Mr. Dasty is mentioned to get copies of anything.
Right, right. Mr. Dasty wanted to make sure that he was copying on it, but the attorneys don't sign the agreements. They don't have the authority to sign on behalf of the townships.
Who made changes when it went back and forth about eight or nine times?
I'm going to leave that to our attorney to answer.
It went back and forth between Ms. Loray and Jen Abbott several times. Who did the input to any changes? Was it Veronica, was it you, Jerry? How did that work?
Our office and their office.
It was both, okay? So why in the world would you allow paragraph twelve point two about Oprah? I take exception to it. As Mr. Razi previously indicated, it's not written in the spirit of the law. I think you should sue Johnson Controls for the consequences of termination amounts and end this agreement at no cost to the taxpayers right now. Surely, writing any contract in breach of existing law should be null and void. Now, Mr. Connor's last meeting, Gavin did give you an exact excerpt with regard to the Oprah.
He spoke to it, yes.
Okay, did you have a chance to look into that?
It's not completed yet.
Not completed yet, thank you.
You're welcome. Rick, come on down.
Richard Bidnick, Fork River. A couple of things, I'm going to take this, because it's easier for me, because I'm shorter. I want people to be able to hear me, because I was having a hard time hearing people tonight. Okay, so Johnson Controls is a nefarious company. I mean, they have a lot of issues, they've avoided taxes. I have a lot of questions with us doing business with them, first of all. Okay, let's put it that way. Second of all, many years ago, in this town, there was a government body controlled by this party who went ahead and did some development in this town, which the public did not support. And because they continued to do what they wanted to do, that group of people were voted out of office, and the other party took control for eight years. So one thing I want to say to the government body here is this. If you do not have a huge amount of support for this project, you can expect that there will be people who will be running against you on a platform, that you are out of touch with the people who elected you to represent them. I don't think you really want to go down that avenue. Already, we're getting at a point where people are getting very aggravated. If you've bothered to read any of the postings that have been on Facebook about what's going on right now, I haven't had one person, and all, I was looking through it before the meeting, hundreds of comments of taxpayers in this town who think this is a good idea. We don't want our taxes to go up. Okay? In fact, I think I stressed this at the last meeting. You people should be working on ways to reduce our tax levies. Now, you talked about the schools. Okay, the schools do take a large part of our, of our taxes. But all this overdevelopment is going to create more students, and we have to pay eighteen or nineteen thousand dollars a year to educate each one of these students. So who's going to be paying for that? Okay, so this is part of the problem. It's like, there are long-term consequences to all this overdevelopment. And you think it's wonderful, I don't personally. I like this town the way it was when I built my home here, back in two thousand and five. There are a lot of people online who agree with me. I've been reading the comments. Okay, so, you know, you have your vision, and we have our vision, okay? There are a few of you and many of us. And the point is, is that this continuing of this project is going to continue to stir up more division in this community, because there are alternative solutions to the problem. And that's the thing that I brought up. When I first brought this up in November of two thousand and twenty-one, so it's been almost two years ago that I came to a public meeting, and I brought this up for the public to be recognizing that this was something that you were looking forward to do. And I was speaking back then, and several of you on this body said, oh, Mr. Bidnick, we agree with you that this is not the right time to go and do this, but yet, you've continued to move forward with this. Some ideas were brought up tonight about remote working, which is the way, when Veronica retires, I'm going to tell you something, the next township municipal clerk administrator is going to be doing exactly what I'm saying, because the younger people of today want to be able to work from at home. And you'll need to have a skeleton crew. And you won't need to have all these people in this gigantic elephant that you want to build. Okay? And so I'm just saying, I'm looking progressively for the future. I'm also looking for the taxpayers. And there are people who want to just keep developing this town, developing this town. You talk about the ratables, the ratables. Well, you are responsible for all the overdevelopment. And that's the reason why we have to have a larger police department. And that's the reason why we're spending more money in our schools. And that's why, you know, this continues to go on. The overdevelopment is the problem, and that is not progressive. For some of us, it's actually regressive because it's ruining the quality of our life.
If I could, Mayor. Mr. Bidnick, if I could, you know, a couple of times, we could agree to disagree agreeably. But when people come up to the microphone and they're going to specifically and continually talk about overdevelopment, I wanted to, just let me, let me talk for a second. You look at our town, 86 square miles. You get off at Exit 74, you make a left. The vast majority of our town is already protected and cannot be built on. Look to the northern part of our county. I'm not going to call out any towns by name. Look to the northern part of our state. It's a, there's barely any blade of green grass that's not covered. It's, it's an impermeable surface because it's completely developed. That's why our property values continue to go up. People are coming here because they want the type of life that you are talking about and reminiscing about. So when you talk about overdevelopment, I want you to juxtapose some of that against other towns in Ocean County and outside of Ocean County. And when you talk, and again, I'll reference my good colleague and my running mate, Deputy Mayor Kennis. When you talk about ratables, we have some wonderful beachfront towns here. I'll say their names. Wonderful places, run wonderfully. Manteloking, Bayhead, and other counties, Spring Lake, Seagurt, wonderful places. It's extremely expensive to live there because they don't have a business tax base on their properties. They're, they are supported almost completely by residential real estate. We want to have a mix. When you have a commercial corridor like we're on right now, County Road 614, Lacy Road, Route 9, and like the mayor says, we control what we can control. Please remember, we are not overdeveloped. I'm not here to, you know, you're going to stereotype me, he's a Republican, he's for this building, he doesn't want to cut, he wants to cut grass? No. I like, I chose to live here. I love this way of life. I like green grass. I breathe the same air and drink the same water you do, and I will continue to live here. I choose it and I will protect it. But please be factual when you're talking about overdevelopment.
Okay, so to finish what I was saying, you have two, two streets, right? You have Lacy Road and Route 9. Unfortunately, towns like Tom's River and Brick maybe have a lot of other different roads that they could overdevelop on. The overdevelopment that I'm talking about is the stuff, the traffic that we're seeing on Route 9, which cannot be, by the way, widened. It's an issue. And you continue to keep putting more stuff on there. I see everywhere, like those condos that are going up. I'm like, oh, my God, there's going to be more kids going into our schools, the taxes are going to be going up. It's like, some of us don't see it that way, okay? This is why I'm saying, you have your tunnel vision and maybe we have our tunnel vision because we're the ones in the end who have to pay for the bills that you guys come up with. So when you've done this overdevelopment, you didn't take into place, oh, we're going to have to have a bigger police department and each police officer costs us so much, plus their health benefits and their pension costs. It's like there wasn't any thought about any of this stuff. And I understand how it works, the friends and the family, okay? I get it, I get it. But the point of the matter is, is that those of us who are not connected that way, and maybe that's the group of people who you listen to, you know, that you surround yourself with. But the point of the matter is that I think you need to get a grip with what the people in this town are saying. And quite frankly, I'm saying this and I've spoken about it before and I will continue to speak about it. You will not get this project that you're doing with any support unless you can prove to the people that this is really to our benefit. And I asked this two years ago. What is the dire need for this new municipal complex? There is none. We know it's not a dire need, okay? So if you really are an emphatic group who cares about the public that you represent, start listening to what I am saying. If it is not a necessity, we don't need it. And you know what? I'm just asking that you listen. And other people have been up here talking about this over and over again, but you're not listening to what we're saying. And it is important that you do start listening. As I said, political careers will be on the line. And believe me, we're not going to give up. And thank you, Gavin, for the excellent job that you've been doing. I, we couldn't do this without you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
May I just interject? There was an issue in comments made about overdevelopment. And I'm not so sure it was residential development or commercial development, but notwithstanding the distinction, I caution the governing body that there's no way that you can stop development of privately owned land. If you do, you must be prepared as a governmental entity to purchase it. It is called eminent domain. You would have to either do it by that or you would be sued for taking under the 14th Amendment. So, and it would cost more than a new municipal building. And so I think everyone can say, and everyone likes to think that they're the last person here. I moved into this town in 1982. I lived in Ocean County all my life. There have been dramatic changes in population for so many people that want to come to a place that's great to raise your family, to make a living, to raise your kids. In 1970, long before, 10 years or so before I moved, that was only 4,000 people. By 1980, there was 10,000 people. By 1990, there was over 17,000, and now you got close to 30,000 people. And when more people move in, they want more amenities, they want more shopping opportunities, they want other types of things that come with the community, like a Home Depot or a Walmart and those other things. Sure, we would like to see Lacy Road be a two-lane road. And that was an issue when I was the mayor of this town, about whether it was going to be expanded to a four-lane road. There were a lot of people that didn't want that. Probably look at it now, thank God, we have four lanes on Lacy Road right now. So there were a lot of people that don't want to be, see anyone else move in. And I assure Mr. Bidnick feels very, it's a great town. He loves this town, I have no doubt about that. When he moved in 2005, there were a lot of people that were here in 2002 and 2003 that probably weren't happy that you came in 2005. Or when I came in 1982, I'm sure the people that were here in the 1970s weren't happy about perhaps me building a house in Lacy Township. And so it's easy to say, no more development. But the laws in the state of New Jersey and the federal government tell us that we can't stop development. It doesn't matter when a planning board application comes before this dais in a different setting with the Land Use Board that the traffic on Route 9 is over capacity. It is not a reason to deny the development. It'll be in court and you're going to lose. And if you try to pass an ordinance that prevents the development, it'll be considered a taking without compensation unless you pony up and you pay for that, that taking. So when we get into the development, it, it, there's a lot of good things that come from the development, but there are a lot of other things that become problematic. And unfortunately, with the federal housing laws, with the state housing laws, low and affordable housing, that's why you have some of these other developments now developing off of Route 9. You can't stop it. And if you do, you'll be in court as quick as you can snap your finger and you'll lose and you'll pay a lot of money. So it's more complicated as it always is. So there are other aspects of the story. This governing body has to operate within the parameters of the law.
And I just want to piggyback on that, that there's one thing that people aren't aware of that came here later. I want to say probably 15 years ago, maybe 20 years ago, the property behind CVS was, they were approved, Mr. Dykoff brought this up, so great point. That was originally approved for, I want to say, seven, this is 15, 20 years ago. 72 or 74, senior condos. Well, that development was fought so long and hard by the, by some of the residents in this township, you know? And so what ultimately wound up happening, rules changed, that's 20 years ago. And they, you know, we have to follow affordable housing rules that what would have been 84 age-restricted or 76 age-restricted condos is now 200 apartments. So the point is that, you know, the only thing, the only thing constant is change. Things will change, the town will change, and we're trying to manage that as best we can. But like Mr. Connor said, you have to be careful what you wish for. They fought that project tooth and nail. Regina, you were a part of it, if I remember. Well, so you fought it tooth and nail and it was 72 approved age-restricted condos is now 200 apartments or whatever it is now.
200, yep. Yes, ma'am. State your name for the record, please.
I'm a shrimp, so I really need to take this mic out. My name is Donna Neal. I've been a resident in Forkett River for six years. I moved down here because when I retired, I couldn't afford to live in northern Bergen County anymore. So I moved down here so that my money could go further on my social security. So right off the bat, I'm going to say I'm totally against this project. Today, I spent $75 on groceries for a bag and a half of groceries. My gas and electric bill has gone up. It cost me $46 to fill my tank that normally costs 26. We got a little bit of a raise in January. That was very, that was nice, but it's been more than blown away. And I can't even imagine at this point in this country's time that we're even contemplating this with a possible World War III, with, with inflation skyrocketing. That would be like me in the situation I'm in, saying, I want to go out and buy a million-dollar house. Would I go out and buy a million-dollar house at this point with the economy the, the way it is, the stock market going down? It doesn't make sense. So I hope I'm speaking for a lot of the senior citizens in this, in this town because 5%, according to the censusreporter.org, 5% are 80 years old and plus. 8% are 70 to 79 years old. 16% is from ages 60 to 69%. And 16% are from 50 to 59 years old. We, we incorporate most of the town population that will end up paying so much more that it will force us out of this town. Between what's going on with the windmill turbines, farms, and taxes going up and everything else going up, we're going to start seeing people move out. I, I understand the whole building thing, I get that. But I'm telling you, and you can't deny it, if you drive from Walmart down to Beach Boulevard, it takes you 15 to 20 minutes now. Can't the planning be where you build the road wider first and then build? I mean, how long will, will it, is it going to take to widen that road, Route 9? I came from northern Bergen County. The same thing happened with Kinderkamak Road in Oridell and River Ridge. So much was built up. You can't, you couldn't even go from one end, from River Ridge to the end of Oridell Emerson without it taking you an hour and a half, a half an hour, 45 minutes. This is what's happening now. So as a senior, the great thing about Forkett River was just maybe taking five, 10 minutes to run to Walmart and back. Now it's taking so much more time. But the main thing is it's the money. The money that we're left with, a major part of the population is struggling right now. It's not the right time. If your child came to you and said, Mom, can I borrow $200,000 from you because I want a four-bedroom, three-bath house? You'd say, what, are you crazy? Don't you have the money to pay for it? No, I was going to borrow the money from you. Well, I don't have it. It just doesn't, there's just no common sense to it. So I don't know about, I mean, I think we have a major idea of how seniors feel about it because it seems like the seniors are the ones that are struggling. But there are a lot of young couples struggling too with children. So my point is, I want you to know how I feel as a resident. And I vote no for this project.
Any other comments in the public? Yes, ma'am.
So Jessica DeLuca, Lenoka Harbor. I just also want to vote no to this, and I do feel like there needs to be some transparency. I understand that you guys say that you are doing our best interest, but I do not agree with that. I am a mother of three. I do live here in town. I am completely, I know this has a little bit off subject, but completely been disappointed by our school system, but yet I continue to have to pay for it. And I moved my children out of the school system. And now this, this building here is going to cause my taxes to rise even more. You brought up if we went by that one gentleman's numbers of $120 million, that it would be $256 or whatever it was. I want that $256 because not only is it going to be that $256, it's also going to be the inflation and everything else that was going on already that is going to be on top of that increase in my taxes. So therefore, I will say to you, I want that $256. So if you can not put this through or go ahead with a different opportunity, think out of the box like some of these other people are saying. I could tell you my generation does want to work from home. I don't, but other people definitely do. That's always an option. You guys are doing a municipal court online. That was something that nobody would ever thought, that a judge would be doing. I'm not just saying here, I'm saying in general, everywhere. Brick is doing, Tom's River is doing it. I'm just saying, if we can take a judge and, and a defendant and a plaintiff and do it via remote, come on. Everybody can be remote nowadays. There's no reason for this building. I understand that this is dilapidated in some sort and, you know, needs a little, it needs a sprucing. But I cannot think that this is a building that is not worth savaging, salvaging or something else. Maybe take a different spot, a different building and maybe, you know, do a little transition there. The only other thing I will say is I do own my own company and all of our products, everything that we buy is almost double right now. So everything that you put into this building is going to be doubled if you do it now. Or maybe, maybe we are going to go through a recession and, and the building prices and all the products will be less then. But I could tell you right now, 100% what Donna has said, parents are struggling. Older people are struggling. Financially, we're all struggling. And if you, if you just look on the news, I mean, it's going to come to an end. We're all going to, not come to an end in that fashion, but it's going to come to head, I should say. We're going to, it can't continue to rise. Inflation is just insane. And right now, we need to put this on the back burner and take a deep breath and reevaluate. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
See, now motion to close the floor.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2023-287. Resolution in the township of Lacy County of Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the convening of an executive session in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
Second.
Mrs. Giuliano? Mr. Pennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Piratola?
Yes.
Mayor Mott.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
On favor?
Aye. No further business.